I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. So my quote, two quotes today. First one is by Wilfred Peterson. "When we become more fully aware that our success is due in large measure to the loyalty, the helpfulness, and the encouragement we have received from others, our desires grow to pass on similar gifts. Gratitude spurs us on to prove ourselves worthy of what others have done for us." And the other one, which I may have already used before, is from Albert Einstein, so you can't go wrong with Albert. "There are only two ways to live your life: one is though nothing is a miracle; the other is though everything is a miracle." All right. Theodora, student advisory. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Public session, public comment. Does anybody have any public comments that they'd like to make? Okay. Theodora, you're up, student advisory.
So originally, I was going to give a presentation on the results of my parent's homework survey, but I cannot access my Google Drive this weekend, which was all my data was. But I got 260 responses in total, and I left it up for about 13 days, October 12th to the 25th, which is today. So I just have a few current events that have been going on at Falmouth High. The homecoming dance, which was Saturday, October 14th, was a huge hit. Everyone loved the DJ. And the pep rally beforehand was also, like, high praise, amazing job. And the college fair on Wednesday. A lot of kids, I know, talked to all the 140 colleges that were there and had fun with the pull-up bar that the military academies brought and just collected a lot of resources like Mr. Kuzarian asked us to. And student government held a meeting after school last Thursday to kind of discuss how we're going to move forward with the year. We didn't, we're not going to have a meeting, we didn't have a meeting today because not enough reps signed up to be basically involved in student government. And so as class officers, we are working on motivating our class to be more involved with their school. And the FHS girls varsity hockey team helped at the Loudfield Truck Show at the fairgrounds this weekend, and that was really fun. That's all I have.
What about the football team?
Oh, they won their ACL 46-5, I think, something like that.
They have the first seed in the playoffs.
Amazing job.
Thank you, Theodora. Any questions for Theodora? Thank you, and thanks for being here. Next issue is town manager, chairman of the board of selectmen, Mr. Jones, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Ron. I don't have too much to report. I just wanted to communicate with the school board about the decisions that the board has made, the board of selectmen have made concerning the senior center site. The reason I also want to come is to express again our appreciation for the ongoing support from the school committee. It has been very clear that no matter which site we choose, the school committee has been very clear that they would work with us in making sure that that site would work out. We have opted not to proceed with Site 2, which is a site on Brickhill Road that we currently have an agreement from the school committee transferring possession or jurisdiction over that. I would encourage this board to withdraw that transfer. One of the things that we were pleased to hear is that this board was interested in moving the football field ultimately to the high school site in their five-year capital plan. This allows us to consider the Gus Canty site as a good place for the senior center. We have voted in that direction. We're doing everything we can to work with our finance committee to be able to move forward in the timetable that we don't think we can do it for fiscal year '17. We can't do it in this current capital budget that's meeting in three weeks, but are hoping we can do everything we can to be able to put some money in fiscal year '18 towards whatever decision you make about moving the football field out to the high school, because that will allow us to have a little more leeway in space at the Gus Canty, both for building and for parking. And so we just wanted to let you know that had happened. We were quite impressed with the turnout at our meeting. So the most of the field hockey team was there following their victory against Cohasset to express their concern about the use of the field hockey site. And for a number of reasons, we decided that we were not going to proceed with that, which has also led us to go to the Gus Canty Center for the senior center. And I was happy to answer any questions you might have about our deliberations or what our plans are.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
Has there been talk of maybe calling it a community center and not just a senior center? Or is that just the interim term that we're using until we're done with the project?
Certainly, the idea is that the construction will be a new senior center and ultimately will be combined into a community center. We hope that people are going to see it that way, but we are talking about building a new facility for the seniors that has the flexibility to grow in whichever direction it needs to. If it turns out that we have way more seniors than teens, then we may be sharing rooms in that direction. But if it comes the other way, we're going to be designing in a flexible way that allows us to do it either way.
Just more of a statement of a clarification. Doug, you had mentioned that, you know, we had, you know, we obviously want to work in concert with the selectmen, but just a clarification, I'm not, I'm not sure that we could characterize it as that sweeping overview that would have carpalage for whatever site, if sites switched and whatnot. So I think had we reassessed the sites in the future, just so I think, I think the school committee does need to have the ability to act individually on individual plans. And I wouldn't want to relinquish that to say that we just, you know, overview any site you might choose that we would switch. That's, I just felt that needed to be said.
It was not my intention to suggest you wouldn't.
Other questions or comments? So before you go, I'd like to go on to the next item that's on our agenda, which is a discussion of the relocation of the football field to the high school. So I was obviously in the audience on the 17th when this board of selectmen made the decision to build the senior center at the Gus Canty Recreation Center. And part of that recreation, part of that recommendation is to move the football field, which is presently, as everyone knows, the forefield, to the high school campus. So that brings up a number of issues for consideration for us, which I just want to take a few minutes to talk about.
Jacob, is there anything to interrupt for one second? The way the plan is we're going forward, it will not require the football field to be gone. Our phase is to do construction on the property that does not require it, so I don't want to suggest that we are forcing this decision on the school committee. It certainly makes it much more appealing and attractive for parking, but the phase actually would involve construction not on the football field site initially and then ultimately possibly parking.
Thank you for that clarification. It's, so, so the first thing is, as Mr. Jones said, as part of the capital plan that Patrick proposed to us back in July, it did have a place marker for moving of the football field up to the high school. I think we had set that for fiscal year '20 and so forth. And the reason for that was, part and parcel, I think, was a sensitivity to expenditures in the town with respect to the senior center, the water treatment plant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We wanted to push it out. And I think part and parcel of it was that, that we have some other priorities, I think, roofs, boilers, those kinds of things. So I may have overstepped myself when I, at the meeting on the 17th, I said it would be fine with the school committee if we moved that up, in fact, into fiscal year '17, fiscal year '18. So I just want to clarify, see if anybody on the school committee has any issues with that. Again, my apologies to the school committee if I overstepped my bounds on that, but I just want to raise that as an issue. Are there any issues with that?
No.
No, as long as we can handle all the questions that remain.
Right. Which, excuse me, so there are a myriad of questions that come up as part and parcel of this. You know, what is the scope of the project? Where on the camp, on the high school campus should the field be? What's the master plan for the whole high school campus? I really think that what we need to do is take a step back and take a really fresh look at the high school campus. I would love it if we could hire a consultant to come in and really kind of take a look at all, what we want to do with the high school campus. Maybe there's some, some monies either from the road race or the CPC to kind of do that kind of work. I thought it was interesting, the proposal that we have later on in this for the vernal pool project. So I want to know how the vernal pool project or any other academic things that we might be thinking about, how that relates to field location. Then there is the issue of grass versus turf. I've already contacted Jed Goldstone, who is the chair of the board of health, and he's more than happy to work with us in terms of, of making that decision as to whether or not we go to grass or turf. He's raised some really interesting issues having to do with the Department of Environment or Protection, because where the high school sits is in what he calls, I think, Zone 2 of the aquifer for Long Pond. And regardless of whether we do a turf field or we do a grass field, there may be some things that we have to do in terms of mitigating the effects of either the synthetic field leaching down or the nitrogen leaching down. So that's an issue. There's also the issue of how this all has an implication with respect to Title IX. You know, who's using the field? How's it being used? And what does that do in terms of the money that's being spent on boys' sports versus girls' sports? Obviously, if it's an all-purpose field, that makes it a little easier, but if it ends up being a football field, then we have some issues that we need to kind of work out there. And then there's tons upon tons upon tons of financial implications. We've heard about groups in the community that came forward a couple of years ago with some money. That, you know, are there conditions to that? Are they still interested in doing that? Who manages the construction of that field if we go forward with it? Whose responsibility for overruns, those kinds of things? Money for the design, money for the upkeep, all of those kinds of things. So, given that, I think, your timeframe is fiscal year '18 for, for all this to happen, fortunately, that gives us some time to, to work these out. And so, so you can see the, the large scope of this. So I feel like we need a lot of attention on this, so I've asked Walter if he would take over the whole aspect of what's the scope of the project, you know, looking at, taking a fresh look at the high school campus and so forth. I've asked Melissa to take over the idea of making, you know, being the person who kind of spearheads grass versus turf. I've asked Kelly to take over issues having to do with the implication of Title IX, and I've asked John to take, to look at the financial implications. So that way, it doesn't, doesn't let any of us off the hook in terms of making these decisions, but it gives us some point people to kind of help us out in terms of really focusing on stuff. And obviously, they're going to have to work really closely with each other. Title IX with finances and these kinds of things, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we've got a, a plan in place or a procedure in place that we can start to address these issues and, and be ready, hopefully, when town meeting approves this and we are able to move the field forward.
Thank you so much for the support.
You're welcome. Any questions on what I just said? Any clarifications that need to be done? Any discussion around that?
I just have one question.
Kelly, what do you have, John?
I don't know when you'll, you'll know, but the, the plans for phasing in parking, depending on our, our timeline, you know, it would really help to know as soon as you know what that, you know, timeline will be for needing the field space or wanting to utilize it, so that if we can have some flexibility in our timeline, that would be really helpful.
Great, thank you. John?
I think that's great, the folks that we've already reached out to. I've actually met with a couple of gentlemen that have a lot of knowledge in the area, and I'm going to share this with everybody. I just have to go over, it's a guide to synthetic turf and a lot of the, some very interesting things about that and weighing the pros and cons, et cetera. But I do think there are other folks with expertise, too, in the, in our community. And the town does run a golf course, too, as well. I mean, that, the folks over there would be one to reach out to as well.
Absolutely.
So I think we shouldn't be shy about including folks.
Absolutely, and all hands on deck for this, I think. Melissa, you have a question?
I did have a question. So, Mr. Jones, you said originally that you were looking to build on the existing building that's there, adding on to the building that's there, I assume?
Yeah.
So what portion of the field or the grounds around it would it be, I don't want to say, pushing into, but could you, I, I don't want to hold you to it, because I'm sure it's in, it's very much in its infancy, but where are we looking?
Well, we've talked to our architect to give us some plans. We will come to town meeting with those. Currently, right now, we'll probably be heading toward, in the direction of the police department.
I see.
And that with the construction. And then allowing space actually on the football field in that direction not to be needed for anything except for parking at this point, but not actually construction of the building.
So where the playground is now?
The playground, which we knew was given by New Balance, was given in honor of family. Of course, part of our plan would be to relocate it on that site as best we could and continue to have the plaques there in honoring the donations that were given for that.
Will the playground be in use during the construction? Will it be relocated? Because I know a lot of little people that love that playground.
A detail that I really can't answer for sure. I mean, certainly, we're, we're sensitive to that. We want to make sure that that space is available, but if we're building construction right there, it's going to be hard to also have it be usable as a playground. And, you know, that, that may be something we have to think, well, during the time of that construction, it may be a loss that we have, but for the game that we're going to get, it is, it would be.
So I just want to speak for the parents that have children in rec programs and then have smaller children that are not in the rec programs. That playground is very much utilized, so please be sensitive to those parents and the children who utilize that during the construction process, because while adults understand that, you know, you have to break eggs to make omelets, littles don't when they're watching their older siblings do sports that they can't do yet.
I would certainly be very sensitive to that.
Walter, you had a question?
Well, sort of a similar spin-off of that question. Have you ruled out going out the back of the rec center?
We're still waiting to hear back from our architect. He was going to check with the engineers as to what the flood zone area is, but his first reaction is the flood zone issues are so specific about the buffer zone that we have to have between the resource and the building, that the cost of that may be prohibitive and the regulations may make it just impossible. But certainly, that's one of the questions we asked. That was the direction I was first leading. Certainly made sense to head in that direction. And I think the first inclination was to build the senior center sort of towards Dillingham, have the access come from Dillingham for the senior center, have the access for the teen center be from Main Street. And they're going to come back to us and say, well, actually, you could do that, but that was their concern is.
That would probably be the most convenient, I think, in terms of access.
Yep. And, but if the flood plain regulations say we can't do it, then...
Have they ever had a flood there? In the 400 years of town history?
That doesn't matter.
John, well, I actually learned recently that the harbor, you know, the inlet there where the Island Queen is and everything, used to go all the way up to Morse Pond. So, yeah, flooding that whole area.
It is a culvert.
Any other questions or comments? Leah?
So about the rec center programs, would they still be running at the rec center during the constructions?
We really haven't gone that far down the road, but certainly, our intention is the construction will allow most of the programs to continue. You're going to be connecting some walls, so you're going to have to limit some of it, but it would not be closing down the entire site during that time.
Anything else?
Certainly, part of our plan also is to, since we're going to have construction and workers there, see what kind of renovations we can do to the current building. And we're not going to just only build on and leave the current building the way it is. We're going to be trying to take advantage of the scope of work to be able, make sure that we can take advantage of what workers we have there to do what could be helpful for the, the current building also.
Sure.
Would there be an opportunity for the public to say, please, that they'd like to see that area improved?
Absolutely, we take input for that kind of idea. The idea is that we'll be coming to November town meeting with some fairly rough schematics and then coming back to the April town meeting with a much more extensive plan that we'll have worked over, because in the April town meeting is when we'll come to the town meeting and then eventually to the town for the full funding of design and construction.
Melissa?
Is it foolish for me to assume that the rec department is on board with us with the renovation and I assume that we've had conversation with them?
They asked us to do this. It was something that they asked.
I just, I just wanted to say it out loud.
Yep. They've been encouraging us very strongly.
Anything else? So let me, in the same way you did it, I want to thank the board of selectmen and the town manager for all the openness that you've taken with us on this project and the communication you've given to us with it. It's been greatly appreciated. And one takeaway that I would take from the conversation we had is it's full speed ahead as far as we're concerned. Let's move the field. Let's get it done.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is a presentation of the French exchange program.
There's so many, so we'll stand.
Okay.
I just, you had asked last spring if we would bring them, and unfortunately, your only meeting is also the night that we have our farewell party, because they're leaving us tomorrow morning. They arrived here in Falmouth last Sunday, the 16th, just after homecoming, so we didn't have to explain why people were painting their faces funny at school and things like that. But the, we've had a wonderful time Monday last week. They were welcomed in school with a breakfast after a tour and then went out to visit the town. Tuesday, Ms. Brothers took us on a wonderful visit to the National Seashore. So we got to learn a lot about the ecology and so forth here on the Cape. Wednesday, they were in school, they went to the college fair. They picked up a lot of information, too. They were collecting pins and stickers, I think. Then on Thursday, they had a trip to Boston and got back a bit late, not on time, but, but later in the day, so our kids could catch up on some homework. And then Friday, they were in school and also went down to Lawrence and presented what they have about their town, their school, and France to our junior high students in 7th and 8th grade. Monday, they were in school again with us and presented to our students. And today, with the help of Mr. St. Julien, our new assistant principal, we facilitated a discussion between the French and the Americans about cultural things that they've noticed and opinions. We, we started with teen life, went on to talk about education, politics, terrorism, and then entertainment. We left it light at the end. And the families have done a great job welcoming them, so we have a couple of our American hosts and their French hosts, and this is one of my teachers that's been staying with me.
Yes, yes. We want to thank you, our students, teachers, and I, to, for this opportunity to continue this exchange and now with Falmouth. It's very important for us that French students and American students can, could meet them all together. I think they have spent a very good time. So there is a, a program, and also for the evening, they went to the beach to eat a pizza. So they spent a time all together, and I think they can have an idea of the way of life of American people. And I have to say that also the families are so nice and always, this evening, we can see that all the families are very nice with our students. And we are going to prepare now the...
Arrival.
The arrival of American students, and we, I, I think that we can do as, as well as American families. So thank you very much. And sorry, phone.
You want to say it?
No, I love it. Everybody should have to do it.
Thank you.
So let me, let me ask a question, so, to the French students.
Yes.
So when you get home and you talk to your parents, what's the first thing you're going to tell them about Falmouth?
What the first things I told to...
What would, what would be the first thing that you would say to your friends or to your parents about your experience here in Falmouth?
I said, "That was great, and I am really happy to stay with him, because I was well recon, well-walking."
I said that I was, I talked about the difference between American life and French life, but I will, I say that it is a great, a good difference, because we have a different culture. The American culture is very different than the French culture, but it's a great, good thing.
Your accent is perfect.
Terry, you had a question? But you have to say, you have to give the question to the French.
Was there, was there something that you thought America was like that your mind was changed about once you arrived?
We have kind of stereotype.
Definitely, yes.
I arrived in the USA, but the American life is very different than we can see in the movie.
Where, where are you from? What, what area of France?
Lyon.
Lyon.
Other questions?
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
So when, when do you go to France?
We go April, we leave April 8th, so we'll arrive on the 9th, and we return home the 21st at the end of vacation. I said I'm coming home, giving us the weekend so I can get over jet lag. The kids will be fine, but I'll be tired.
We would love to have some students come back and talk to us about that.
We certainly will. It'll be great. Yes.
How many, how many students, how many French students are here?
Well, there are 15, 15 here in Falmouth, and we partnered with West Bridgewater, so there are six with them, so 21 families on each side of the Atlantic are, are involved.
And how many teachers?
There are three teachers here.
We are three teachers, yes. I'm not a teacher in English, I'm not, no.
Catherine teaches Spanish.
No, she's very dead.
The English teacher was at West Bridgewater, so they're all on their way to our dinner. And we have also a history teacher who happens to be Orfele Anne's mother. And I, I've known these ladies for many, many years, so it's great to renew friendships and, and work this way, so it's good.
Excellent. Any other questions? That's excellent. Thank you very much for taking the time. So have a great dinner.
Thank you so much.
Such a good idea that we did that.
All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation on ballot question four. We were supposed to have somebody here presenting, but I don't see them, so we're going to move on. Request, next item, request to support the vernal pool project at Falmouth High School by Dr. Brothers.
It's actually not Dr. Brothers.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Everybody said that.
Just take it. Take that.
Beautiful timing. Second to get started here. Oh, I need projector on. First. So, good evening. My name is Chris Brothers. I'm the head of the science department, grade 7 through 12, and I'd like to introduce to you Ian Ives, who's the director of Mass Audubon's Long Pasture Wildlife Sanctuary, as you can see on the slide, but he's also the director of the Schumet Holly Sanctuary here in East Falmouth. We're here tonight to tell you about a project that we're proposing to do that affects both the high school and the north school, which is to build two vernal pools, one each at each of the two schools. And vernal pools are small, very small usually, wetlands that are rather shallow. They dry up seasonally, so they support a particular assemblage of amphibians and other species that aren't found in ponds that actually have fish in them, because they can't withstand the predation. So I gave you through Sharon a copy of two, a very, very highly summarized two-page proposal that's based on a proposal that Ian produced for us, which is actually about 36 pages long with lots of photos, and so we're presenting a very basic summary of that proposal here tonight. Yes, okay. So we've been partnering with Mass Audubon for the past five years on this vernal pool project, and it essentially has three parts to it. And the first piece is that Mass Audubon naturalists, Ian included, come to the classroom and give presentations to our students about the importance of vernal pools. And they've done this for about 35 to 40 AP science students each year at the high school and about 250 to 280 seventh graders at the Lawrence School each year. We follow that up by going out to the Asshument Sanctuary in East Falmouth to see some of the vernal pools that Ian has constructed there. You have 12 there now? 12, 12 at Asshument?
No, no, no.
Six at Asshument.
Six at Asshument.
So he's been building these vernal pools for quite a while on the Cape. And the students have the chance to measure water quality, physical parameters of the pools, sample all the organisms that live within the pools. And what we're, one of the things we're trying to do is involve them in citizen science. And this is actually giving Mass Audubon and Ian and wetland ecologists some good data about how these constructed pools sort of evolve over time and what kinds of species you can find there and who comes in first, second, third, and so forth. Another big, very exciting piece of this, I think, and this is the reason I got involved in this project in the first place, is because this little critter called the spade-footed toad, it is an endangered species on Cape Cod, and it only lives in these very shallow vernal pools. Ian has permission from the state to collect their eggs at Savineck Beach in Barnstable. And then we raise their tadpoles. We raise the eggs to the toadlet stage where they actually have their front and their hind legs. This takes six to eight weeks or so in our classrooms. And so far, we've raised about 400 of these little toadlets. One issue is that they don't breed every year, and that's one of the reasons why they're endangered. So we have these aquaria set up in the science gallery at the high school, and it's a very, very popular, kids come over every day to check and see, "Do they have their legs yet?" And, "Are they hopping yet?" And, "Oh, they went home?" That kind of thing. So that's been really an exciting project that we've been working on with Ian. So you probably know, you may know, that amphibians globally are in decline. And one of the reasons why they're in decline is that about 50% of the wetlands in the United States have been destroyed in one way or another, mostly drained for agriculture, which is certainly true on the Cape, and filled for development. So one of the things that we're hoping to do in this project in a very small way is to help to replace some of those wetlands that we've lost. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Ian.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to say how lucky I am to work with Chris Brothers, who's a fantastic asset to all of you. She also used to work for Mass Audubon at the Welfley Bay Sanctuary way before my time. Not way before. But really, it's been wonderful working with Lawrence School, Falmouth High School on this project. This is, well, it was first and foremost a conservation biology project to protect this rare species and to help restore rare wetland habitat. But as we grew the project, we realized quickly that maybe the biggest, most important facet of the project is the involvement of students and the community in the project. So that project takes on different sort of avenues for success. Because as Chris said, the spade-footed toads are a pretty fleeting critter that don't breed very regularly, and there's a lot of variables in trying to protect them. So any way we can expand the project to incorporate the community, the better. So with that said, why are we creating the pools at the schools? Well, again, we've realized that, especially with a lot of the new curriculum standards coming down, every Student Succeed Act, Mass Audubon in particular is in a really good position to work with schools, students, and the community to help do our work. And so, I mean, we can talk about what's been accomplished through the high school, students actively taking part in helping the spade-footed toad. But beyond that, students and the school community at large can help restore and create wetlands on their campuses that can be used as what we're calling living labs. In other words, these are pools that can be incorporated into the, not just clubs, like environmental clubs, but into curriculum. So we took this on last year in Chatham at the Montemoyn Middle School. This was the first school on the Cape that we created a wetland at. We partnered with the Chatham Conservation Foundation, which had a property directly adjacent to the school, to build wetlands with the students and the teachers' help over a two-day period, and they'll be used in perpetuity as a living classroom. And the teachers there were hugely enthusiastic about this because they wanted opportunities for the students to get out into the field, participate in the sort of work that we do. But the best part was that it could be right there on the campus. So literally, it's a two-minute walk past a baseball diamond out into the woods that's owned by the Chatham Conservation Foundation. That's where the new pools were created. So the students now have this real great opportunity without having to take buses, complicated field trips and all that, just to be right there. So we think it's a big opportunity. So that kind of encapsulates, I guess, this slide. The conservation benefit, again, it could be a smaller component, but it still has value because wetlands, as we all know, are ecologically rich, biodiverse habitats that are very important for different species. And what we can do now is actually create the wetlands to basically accommodate certain types of critters. It doesn't have to be for the spade-footed toad. It could be for any number of other animals that use wetlands. So I think that encapsulates that.
So are you able artificially to create a wetland that, in fact, does offer that biodiversity?
Unequivocally, yes. So Tom Bevinghauser, who will be creating wetlands with us here, has been working with me for eight years and has built thousands, when I say built, it could be created or restored. Created meaning building one in a place that it wasn't before, or restoring one in a place that has one. We now have the technology to be able to do this successfully. I've seen it, but even outside of my little world, Tom Bevinghauser, many, many others have seen this across the restoration community. It's being done. The key is doing it intelligently. You need to have the skills and experience to do this in order for it to be successful. But it's really not as complicated as it may seem. These aren't huge, you know, engineering projects like the Herod River Project that costs millions of dollars. These are projects that can be done on a much smaller scale. They can involve the students, most importantly, so they get to take part in the STEM aspect of it. And I can't stress enough how valuable it is for the students to take part in it because they're actually seeing a tangible impact on their local environment. And they get to be, you know, connected to it for years, so forth. But that's, that's a great question, for sure. So some of the examples of things we can do with the wetlands, school teachers of various grades can incorporate lessons into this work. It could be something as simple as creating a sandbox adjacent to, literally almost a little sandbox adjacent to the wetland to see what animals are coming and going, because mammals and birds, all sorts of wildlife, use these wetlands, and you can track things coming and going. You could be a lot more sophisticated by monitoring the wetlands regularly, using dip nets. You can set up audio digital recorders to play and listen for sounds. It's really endless. We don't have the time to go through it, but in the proposal, I list a whole variety of things that we've worked, we, Mass Audubon have worked with schools on after the wetlands that we built. All the wetlands we build on our sanctuaries go through monthly monitoring. This is the way that we can prove what we're doing's valued. And there's really no way to prove it unless you monitor the success of the project. So as far as the spade-footed toads are concerned, we're head-starting these toads with schools. We've released them into the newly created wetlands, and then we've been doing monitoring, checking to see if the toads that we release are surviving and reproducing. So there's all sorts of ways that, from a science, math, even art, different variety of ways that students can get involved in things like this.
I think that two really strong pieces of this proposal are the last sentence in this slide, that it's a very positive message for students that they can actually do something to help improve their environment because they tend to just get a lot of negative, 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 how we've ruined the environment. And that's not necessarily the case. So there's many things that are now that are much more positive than when I was in high school or younger. And that's a good lesson for kids that they can have a positive impact on the environment. And the other piece is that, and Ian alluded to this before, by having these wetlands right on our property, we increase the number of students who can participate in this because it's not just, when we go to the Asshument Sanctuary, we have to kind of limit the number of students we can take there at any one time. It's limited to 45 kids. So with having the vernal pools right at the school, it's not just those 45 kids that are in the STEM class. It can be all the seventh grade, all the eighth grade. Because of the project being right at the Lawrence School, even the Mullen Hall and Morse Pond kids are within walking distance to come over and use that wetland if they choose to. And likewise, at the high school as well, it's open to any teacher who might want to go out there and use the wetland for whatever purpose. And that kind of leads us to the idea of where do we propose to actually build these wetlands? And also the size. So the size is only about 40 feet across. So we're not talking a very big, what do you think? It's maybe like the size of this table area here?
Yeah.
So it's not a major construction project. Although we do need excavators to be able to do this. You need the right equipment and somebody who's trained, obviously, to do it properly and safely. So Ian and I went out last May, and we walked both the properties and looked for sites that are suitable ecologically, but also we took into account where are the fields possibly going to be built at the high school and avoided those areas. And at the time, we were also thinking about the senior center, which seems to have changed since then. But we did take a lot of those things into account. And Ian also did some soil tests to make sure that we were in an okay spot for that. We want to be cognizant of not having to take out too many trees because people don't really like that, and it's also more work for us. So we picked three sites at each property, and what we're showing you here is kind of our top site, shall we say. I don't know, can you even see this really in the picture?
Could you point out on the map where that is?
Probably not too, too out. So this is the Lawrence School. This is the Lawrence School, and this is that sort of bus loop that's in front of the building. And this is Weeks Pond over here. This is Shiverick Pond here, and that's the road that goes over to Morse Pond. Excuse me, Mullen Hall. I always get those two backwards. And so the yellow pin here is showing where we're proposing to put that site. A lot of this property is either too close to a wetland, so we don't want to get within 100 feet. And this area back here is quite steep, so not really conducive. All of this area is playing fields, and we did look at a spot down here, but we decided that was a little too close to the road. One of the other considerations is we ideally would like to have this wetland in a place that's easily accessible to the students to get to relatively quickly, so they don't spend a lot of time just getting out there and back. And nicely, I think, to also have it visible to people who come into the school, so that the impact of the education about the importance of wetlands is not just for our students, but for everybody who comes to the school and can observe these sites.
I might add, if you have a copy of the proposal, there's a design form in the back of that. One of the appendixes explains the criteria that we use to determine the site. So appropriately and intelligently determining a site is really important. And Tom and I have a lot of experience doing that over the years. I can also say quickly that the Conservation Commission here in Falmouth has partnered with us at a nearby site called the Brievole Site, just down the road from the high school. It was a big restoration project. There's money available to do some upland and some wetland restoration. And last year, we partnered together on that, and that involved a lot of design and a lot of appropriately placing these pools. So Falmouth Conservation Commission can attest to some of the work that we're proposing here.
So in the two-page packet that I gave you, these pictures are actually included in there. If you can see them a little better in there than on the screen. And this is the proposed site at the high school, which is along the exit road. This is that one-way road that goes out from the high school parking lot to Brook Hill, and that's where the softball field is right now. So there's a little piece of land in there between the two that's big enough to put a 40-foot pool into. You wouldn't necessarily believe from the picture, but the scale is such that it is. We looked at that site. Again, it's visible to visitors coming into the building. It's already a sort of natural depression there, which is nice. In fact, it indicates that it might have been a wetland at one point. We looked at a couple sites down in here, which are still possibilities, and for some reason, that doesn't work out. We looked at a site back here. This is where the ropes course is, and I have a forest plot here in the woods that I'm studying with my students. So to put the pool right next to the forest plot would be nice for my class. And there is actually a fairly natural, we think, vernal pool that's right behind the building here. And there is also a vernal pool, believe it or not, the drainage area from the student parking lot and from this parking lot that was obviously built as a drainage area, has wood frogs in it. So it is technically certifiable as a pool, right?
Amazingly.
And that's what the construction process looks like. Ian, do you want to say anything?
What you're looking at here is a liner. So when we were talking about creating wetlands in areas where the wetlands didn't exist previously, it's often the case that we use a liner that gets buried. So what you're looking at here is the early stages of having just laid the liner down, cutting out the circular shape to the dimensions we want. You'll see, you can't see it all in this image, but there's a slight depression in there. It's almost like a satellite dish, very gentle slopes. There's no cliffs to fall into. There's no risk of drowning. These are very, very shallow wetlands designed to look totally natural. Once the construction is done, you will not see the liner. It will be completely covered with about 15, 20 inches of soil, which will slowly start to compact. And that will be the wetland. So you're looking at the wetland. The water can only accumulate around the liner. Beyond the liner, the water's going to absorb into the substrate. And the Cape, of course, with so much sand, it's almost always necessary to create a liner wetland unless you get down to groundwater table, or you happen to find clay or some compactable soil that you can create a surface water wetland. So we use the liner technique, we call it, for a lot of the schools we do because it gives us a lot of flexibility to design a wetland to the depth and the hydroperiod we want. It gives you all the flexibility in the world. The drawback is that it costs a little bit more than doing it without one. But at these sites, after doing a review, checking the soil, and really examining the site, it's obvious that we need to do a liner wetland in both Falmouth High and Lawrence. These are just images among many that you can see in the proposal, wetlands that Tom Bevinghauser has created across the country. I didn't put photos in of the wetlands that we created here. There's one over at Falmouth Academy that was done last year, and then again, two over at the Montemoyn Middle School. And you could see wetlands created without a liner, surface water wetlands, oh, I'm sorry, groundwater wetlands. The Brievole Site, which is 10 minutes away, and Asshument Holly Sanctuary has, as I said, a whole bunch of liner wetlands over there. It's amazing how quickly they colonize with plants. You don't need to plant after creating a wetland, as we've learned after several years of doing this. We've used a lot of money, spent a lot of money on wetland plantings. It is not necessary at all. They will come in on their own because you're providing water, and water is life. Same thing with the wildlife. Everything from vertebrates all the way up to mammals will colonize these wetlands in due course, and you don't need to transplant things and head-start creatures to get them to be utilized.
So I was going to say, that's our presentation. I would invite questions. Teri?
Do, so grasses or things will grow around them so that people won't inadvertently walk through them and kill the little toad's stuff?
Right. Yeah. It's, it's pretty clearly delineated because you see specific wetland plants starting to colonize the wetlands that are different from those around it. And the general, even though it's a gentle slope, it's still clear enough that you're looking at a wetland.
You probably wouldn't want to go in without boots.
Yeah.
Most of the year, anyway.
Right. Yeah. The muckiness tends to dissuade people from getting in there and loving it to death for getting in there and messing around.
Thea?
So I love the equity aspect of this, that all students could have access to these pools. Question I have, it's actually about the funding piece. So it looks like you have some funding coming in, and you're hoping to get some grants to cover the rest of the cost?
Correct. So we're proposing to build two pools, and one would actually be built as part of a teacher workshop that Ian is proposing and that we're hopefully going to be hosting at Falmouth High School. And Ian already has the funding to do that workshop and build that pool. So we are now in the process of getting enough additional funding to build the second pool, which would likely be at the Lawrence School. Still haven't completely decided what the priority site is if we only get enough for one, but I don't think we have to make that decision because I think we're going to get enough for two. And the reason I say that is we already have a $3,000 pledge from Salt Pond Area Bird Sanctuaries, who in fact paid for the, or helped pay for the pool at Falmouth Academy last year. So we have to raise around $4,500. So we're well on our way. And we're also hoping that we can get some of the construction costs donated by a local contractor. It's one day of contractors' time, and Ian's been successful at doing that in the past. And we have quite a few contractors in Falmouth, so hopefully, many of whom had students go to Falmouth schools. So we're hoping that we can get at least some of the cost in kind. So, we're hoping that we can get at least some of the cost in kind. And if we, you know, get your approval and support to move forward tonight, I'm going to start writing grants to get the last 1,500, 2,000, however much we feel we might need to raise.
One, do you have more?
I was just going to quickly say, by promoting the project through media, we were able to receive a lot of in-kind donations for the work we did at Chatham, the Montomoy School. People love projects like this. And construction companies love to provide equipment and throw up on our systems. So, I have no doubt we'll be able to raise the money.
How about maintenance? Are there any maintenance pieces with these?
No question. So, there is no pipes, there's no pumps, there's no aeration. There's nothing that requires maintenance on these. The liner is buried safely underneath the ground. It actually has a geotextile pad as part of the kit that comes with the liner that protects it. I've tried to stand on it and gouge it with a spade shovel with all of my weight. I can't puncture it. These are really sturdy liners. They're not like, you know, Kmart liner that you go buy and throw down on your pool. These are manufactured by Fabseal, which is a company that makes fish-safe liners that are non-toxic, used for landfills and so on. They come from Oklahoma. That's the only brand we use and they're shown to be, they'll last a lifetime, human lifetime.
And so, the pool dries out. If we're not having any rain and it dries out, it'll be fine.
And that's what we want.
Okay.
That's, well, to be determined the hydro period. But, you, we would likely want to create a supplement to vernal, which would mean it'll dry up over the summer months. So, no maintenance. Maintenance free.
Melissa.
So, I have two questions. One about the Lawrence School site. It seems like that's a pretty busy site for, when I think about a wetland or a vernal pool, that just seems, I appreciate that you want to, should have it be part of a showcase. You know, show people that, look what we're doing, including our natural habitat wetlands that maybe over the years, people and building have kind of taken some away. But, I, I'm worried that that's so public and not sort of protected at the Lawrence School. Then, my second question is, maybe, are, what are we doing with the existing vernal pools at the high school? Are you studying them? Are they, are the students using them to their benefit? Can the toads be?
Ian and I went out and looked at that vernal pool this last spring. I used to actually take my students down to that vernal pool years and years ago.
The one by the parking lot?
The one behind the high school, behind the cafeteria.
Behind the cat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, the biology classes do go to the one that's by the parking lot.
Yep.
And I used to take my biology classes to the one behind the school. The problem with that wetland right at the moment, which hopefully, we can take care of, is that it's so overgrown, the path getting down to it, that it's really difficult to get a class of students down to it at the moment. So, we talked about the possibility of being able to clear a trail down to that. But, we need to be sure that we have Conservation Commission approval before we do anything like that. I should also say that that, it looks like a natural vernal pool and it probably actually is, but it does have some amount of road runoff coming from the parking lot as well. So, it's difficult at this time to tell whether it was actually constructed in 1973 as part of a drainage system from the parking lots, which it may well have.
Landscape, right.
Yeah. But, it looks very, very natural. And that's actually kind of a hallmark of these constructed pools is the first year. Maybe not, you've got some drift fence or something around it. But, very shortly, it looks like it's been there forever. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions. Kelly.
So, are there rules about protection of vernal pools like there are with other wetlands where you can't? There are?
Yes.
So, if, so, does that apply to ones that are created as well as natural ones?
If it reaches a certain regulatory threshold in terms of size, in terms of creatures in it, then it can be certifiable as a vernal pool. Certified vernal pools are, under the Wetlands Protection Act, it's a sort of a layer of protection. And whether these pools would be certifiable or not is debatable because they're so small. And again, these are really more intended to be sort of study labs than they are to be large expansive, you know, wetlands that would meet that threshold to become certified.
But, there's no way to control that, right? So, if it, if they happen to do really well, then they could in theory become certified pools. I guess my concern is that, you know, right now, this is awesome and I love the idea. But, what happens if something happens and we want to take it out and we can't?
Right. Well, a size threshold is a critical piece of whether it can be certified. It falls under the jurisdiction. So, these being forty feet in diameter and given what they're, where they are and what they're supposed to do, I'm sure that the Falmouth Conservation Commission would understand what the role of these wetlands are. I would be skeptical as to whether these could be officially certified because they're not meeting a certain size threshold.
Well, they need to have certain species in them as well.
And they would need to have certain species. But, what you're saying is, yeah, we don't know what species are going to come.
Right.
But, we do have control of the sizes of them.
And we don't want to discourage the species from coming so that we stay below the threshold. So, I don't want to, I just don't want to get caught in something that we later regret.
But, exactly. That's why I think it's so important to intelligently.
And that's one of the reasons at both sites where we said, okay, well, this, this looks like a good place, but it could be the potential future site of, oh, whatever. So, we don't want to put a pool in the middle of that. Right.
And that's part of the answer to your prior question as well. Again, many, many pools have been built around the country by Tom Bevinghauser at schools where he's gone through this very process. In terms of protecting the pool to prevent it from getting loved to death, there's simple ways to do that by creating sort of subtle vegetation boundaries. A few signs go a long way. And again, these aren't necessarily spots, you can see on these images, where kids are necessarily going to want to go in because they're mucky and muddy. It's really more of a, you know, opportunity for them to take advantage of it under supervision.
I'd be interested to see the plans from the high school from '73 to see if the wetlands were properly marked. But, I suppose that's not a question for you. Just curious in general.
More questions for Chris or you? John?
Number one, I love the idea. I like the aspect that it would be inclusive for all kids and, you know, and that any kids with any kind of challenges or whatnot be closer from physical challenge or any kind of challenges. And then, the savings, cost savings on bus trips, things like that. I love the fact that you're self-sufficient. I'd suggest incorporating a webcam into it somehow in most locations. Couple of the question side would be, I would be inclined to put it out by the high school in that back area as opposed to anywhere near the sports fields. Because then you have the potential with fertilizer issues, things of that nature. And then, I also would want to kind of get some sort of okay from town council with regards to liability. Because people drown in bathtubs. So, if a kid, God forbid, a kid drowns in the water there, then is there more liability for? I mean, we, you know, A, you don't want it to happen, it's a horrible thing. B, the liability too.
That is actually something we talked about with Nancy yesterday. Yeah.
Something that every, every administration posed that question for all the projects in the Dine Schools.
And how does that question get answered?
Well, again, it's, we're talking about extremely shallow wetlands. Yes, you can die in a bathtub. But, we're talking about very gentle slopes here. So, as if you're running into a puddle that's created on the side of a road or part of a dirt road. You know, often we'll see, you know, dirt roads compacted enough that they hold water. We're talking those sorts of depths, 24 inches max for water depth.
But, would the, so, those things existed by nature, so if that happens versus we're doing this, we're digging it up? And then, if something happens, are we liable? Would they have an answer to that?
My, I guess, only answer to that is that there's already wetlands on both these sites that, in my impression, are potentially more dangerous to a student than what we're proposing.
Some of them have river rap rocks. Would pose more damage as you get into the wetlands.
And in fact, at the Lawrence School, we, somebody in the past, I'm not sure, who actually built a dock down to the pond. There's steps in a small area there so kids can access the pond for exactly that reason because they want to be able to do water quality studies in the pond.
That's a good point.
Yeah. I'm just wondering whether with, just like if you have a pool in your backyard or something, whether, you know, we'd be better served just to put a fence around it just to kind of cover ourselves to eliminate that risk.
And I think it's really important to figure those pieces out. And Chris and I did talk about that. We talked about several things. We talked about the Conservation Commission in town and how the permitting happens and all of those pieces. And we talked about it not conflicting with the overall field plan. And I think you've done a really nice job on that. We talked about the sustainability piece. The pieces for me that are really important are the teaching and learning. And I go right back to the strategic plan, the access equity and opportunity for all kids, and then, working with other agencies to make this happen. I do agree that the liability piece needs to be thoroughly investigated. And that is to cover all of us. And we can do that. And I can help you with that.
Thank you. Other questions for Ian or for Chris? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
What did you just second?
It's so great. It's a great idea.
I'm not quite sure what you just seconded, though, because I'm not sure what the motion.
I second Melissa's motion to support the vernal pool projects at Lawrence and the high school, pending all of the things that Nancy just said.
New liability character.
Right. There you go.
And this is to support. It's not that we're voting against it.
No, to support the project.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great idea.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Love it.
And we will hold a special day for the school community when we get this built. And we'll take you all dip netting and you'll see how much fun it is.
Works for me.
Pick a collection. Every gram of rubber booty.
I've got to miss my pond.
Awesome.
That is exciting. Bill Rock?
I don't.
Our next thing.
Denise? I don't know if we want to vote to ballot.
You're here about the ballot question?
I am.
Mona? Introduce yourself and.
I'll be brief because I'm sure most of you are aware of ballot question four is for recreational marijuana. My name is Denise Kuhn and I'm actually from Sandwich. I am a member of the Born Substance Free Coalition and a volunteer in Sandwich for Prevention and Substance Abuse. I am concerned about the ballot question because it legalizes marijuana for recreational purposes, not for medicinal. We currently have medicinal. Ballot question four will not change medicinal law in Massachusetts. We also have decriminalized one ounce of marijuana. I'm sure you know that as well, given all of that is out in the media right now about marijuana. I'm here to share with you what our ballot question has on it. Currently, there will be no THC limit, which is the cycle ingredient that causes impairment, makes you high. They see anywhere from 20 for the smokable, dried leaves of marijuana, 20% THC, to 95% in concentrates. Our ballot allows for no limit on THC. And concentrates like edibles, that's how you get a concentrate, are sprayed onto candies like gummy candies, desserts. We'll have soda available. That's part of the edible market, which again, will have no THC limit on it. My biggest concern with the ballot question and why I'm here talking to you about it is because anybody, if we pass this, will be able to grow six plants per person, 12 plants per household. And they only have to be 500 feet from a school. They can be your neighbor. They can, also, people will be able to give it away up to an ounce of marijuana, which is about a sandwich bag, you know, like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich Ziploc bag, of marijuana, which is about 40, depending on how you roll a joint, joints. Also, we'll be able to give away five grams of dabs. And I don't know if marijuana concentrate, dabs is the slang word for shatter and honey wax and butane, which is, there are a couple of ways to make it. One is a very highly flammable means to make it. They use butane. We, actually, New York just lost a firefighter to that in the Bronx. And it exploded, the dabs lab exploded at someone's house. They had their own lab because they use these flammable gases. There's also another means to do it. I'm not going to share that. I don't like to really give ideas. So, but, there's a very simple way. Unfortunately, these methods are on YouTube and you can Google how to make dabs. Marijuana concentrates are typically as high as 95%. And all you have to do is dab or smoke vape a dime-sized amount of marijuana concentrate called dabs. And that is the equivalent of smoking five joints at once. You get an instant impairment. And I'm sure you guys know what the vape, vapes are, right? So, currently in Sandwich, we don't have a bylaw stating no vaping in public. Most towns do not have a bylaw to state that you can't vape in public. You can't smoke in public in most towns, but you can vape in public. So, someone could essentially be vaping. I don't know if you have, you know, vapes, if you see them in schools or not. But, so, that is one way that kids are, and adults are using it. So, going back to homegrowing, the concern that I have for that is that the target market would be our youth. Our youth are not going to be able to obviously go into a pot shop and buy marijuana because they're not going to be 21. However, with the allowance of homegrowing, the up to 12 plants per household, and giving away of the marijuana, marijuana concentrates, the target age group would be anybody under the age of 21. So, I'm here to ask you to consider becoming opposed and publicly opposing the ballot question number four. And obviously, to just offer information about that.
Questions for Denise. Walter?
Just to reinforce statement of what you're talking about is, I think, most of the research has shown that marijuana is the primary introductory drug to higher drug use for young people.
The gateway.
Yeah. So, that by itself would be reason enough looking out for the youth not to.
Right.
I mean, you'd like to think adults could responsibly use it. But, once you make it available, it's going to pill you down to that level. And that by itself, to me, would be reason just not to do it, not to vote for it.
Right. And I apologize. I've been speaking about this for months now. So, I didn't even really tell you the whole thing. I told you the things that are not necessarily common knowledge about homegrowing. A lot of people don't know that our ballot allows for that because our ballot is actually for the taxation and regulation of marijuana, which I think we can all agree would be a great thing. You know, we want to know where marijuana is coming from. We want to make sure that it's not being laced with anything, fentanyl, heroin, anything, cocaine. Kids, people get marijuana off the street from whomever and we don't know where they're getting it. Unfortunately, with the homegrowing and the giving away, which is on page 17, we're still not going to know where people are getting it. And so, and going back to the gateway conversation, I don't have active addiction in my family. I'm very lucky. My 17 and 18-year-old do not and have never have used substances. I have no idea why. My husband and I are just very lucky that they do not. But, I do have obviously friends. And I'm, the gateway debate is very difficult for me. But, I could never, ever say to a parent that has lost a child or is dealing with addiction and tell them that it's not true. I just, I know too many people that children have started with marijuana. So, I completely agree with you. It's just unfortunately, I don't bring it up because it ends up as a debate.
Well, I think it would be a good point to stress. Like I said, that would be my primary concern is it's easier to, and it sets an example for the younger kids that, number one, smoking it or using it in any ways is okay. And then, it makes it easier to get. So, that by itself would be a reason to not.
Unfortunately, we have, by decriminalizing, we've given that perception that marijuana is okay and harmless when 95% THC is considered a hard drug. Actually, anything over 15% is considered a hard drug. So, Colorado leads the country in heroin, cocaine, alcohol, and marijuana. And they have for some, quite some time. I know that you probably all hear that Colorado, their child or youth use has not gone up. But, it hasn't gone down either. And they're still leading the country. So, though maybe it hasn't gone up, they're still number one. And I really don't think that in this epidemic that we have personally, that we are in a position to put any more drugs out on the streets. And I also don't feel like we'll be able to focus on the opioid crisis that we have. I feel the governor and the state has done or has, is trying to do the best they can with the opioid crisis. And I don't think that the work will be able to continue. We spend 1% to 2% on prevention. I don't know what you guys spend. I know that you do, do events because I'm born in Sandwich and we see what everybody else is doing. But, a lot, we don't spend enough money to teach our youth, like you pointed out, the gateway aspect of it. So, I appreciate that. I definitely agree with you. It's just a really hard battle to fight.
It is. Scary.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Not a question. Thank you very much for coming. So, it requires an. So it requires no imagination for me to, to see what the impact of legalized marijuana could have on our student population, but I would like for us to not vote on whether or not to support question four or not, only because I don't feel comfortable setting a precedent that we are going to take a stance on every referendum item that comes up, not just statewide, but also just locally. So that's my two cents. I don't know where everyone is at with that, but that's my personal opinion, I don't want to see us take a vote on it, although I...
I appreciate that, actually.
I thought you did a lovely job, and I support you.
Thank you.
But I just don't feel comfortable.
I actually really appreciate that you said that, and I understand it, actually. Really, my goal is here to educate about the ballot, so...
And you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And everyone's going to go home and Google dabs, it's very educational.
Yeah, but don't tell your kids, too.
Other questions, comments?
Do you have any other statistics? Because I was struck by researching this and learning, you know, in addition to the things that I knew about the increase in the homeless population in Denver and things of that nature, that just school-related stuff, that the kids in Colorado were at twelve percent usage of marijuana, whereas Massachusetts at eight percent. So one can envision, okay, we're going to add four percent perhaps. And then the thing that really struck me was that drug-related student suspensions and expulsions increased thirty-two percent during that time. Do you have any other stats like that?
So I don't have stats, and I have to be honest with you, because I don't, stats are, for me, are difficult, I know we do these surveys with our kids and stuff. I go, I listen to the people, and I talk to a lot of people from Colorado, I listen to them, I listen to the parents that say what it's doing to them, and Colorado did not legalize the entire state, their ballot was only for whomever, whichever county or area voted in majority, so only two-thirds of Colorado is legal. We don't have that option. We all, the entire state of Massachusetts, has to opt in, whereas Colorado did not. So the statistics are difficult in Colorado, so you'll see some like Denver, where there's a high dropout and stuff like that, and you'll see another town where they'll do a survey and they don't have that, but that's because they don't have marijuana in their town. People of Colorado is a town that does have marijuana, and they're actually have on their November ballot to get rid of it. So they're trying to get out. It's going to be very, very hard for them to get it out, because they've already got, like you said, it's brought in more people, they have a homeless population, so it's going to be really difficult for them to get rid of it, whereas people are moving there to do it, to have marijuana. So it's kind of like stacked against them. So in terms of numbers, you know, and so sixty-nine percent of their fatality marijuana OUIs, you know, they're saying sixty-nine are for marijuana, I don't want to say that it's not, but we don't have a, this is a baseline, I guess, so. I listen to the facts that are coming from the people, from the newspaper, you know, I know media doesn't always tell the truth, but I can only go by the people that have contacted me and let me know, and what I see from Colorado, unfortunately. Though I do believe they do, you know, I know that they have a problem in terms of like percentage, I hope that's all right.
No, I just think those, those are some things that I think those are powerful.
Yeah, and since I've been doing this for so long, I'll also be told that, you know, it's anecdotal, like, oh, you know, anything I say like that. So I'm just, why I speak on the ballot, even though I'm against substance use for substance-free, I speak on the ballot in that I don't think that it's right for us that ten percent with a two percent tax for local towns that will end up with pot shops. Do you guys have an application for medicinal marijuana?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's one.
So you automatically will be one of the first recreational towns. You will automatically have recreational marijuana, because medicinal marijuana, we'll be able to sell recreational marijuana. So that's another thing to consider. Now, in Sandwich, we don't have, we don't have a medicinal marijuana application. You only need an application, you never even have to open up a pot shop. You never have to open up a medicinal marijuana. You'll be able to deliver it, just because you have an application. Same with Born on McGough Boulevard, where Ryan's amusement, somebody has an application to sell marijuana, medicinal marijuana, so if this passes, they automatically get recreational marijuana, as do you.
So I want to follow up on that, because I'm looking at the...
Yeah, that's very vague, this is...
Well, but what it does say is local cities and towns can limit or ban marijuana businesses.
So you can, but you have to take a vote, and it has to go to a petition, and it has to go to a state election in 2018. So it has to be petitioned first with ten percent of your voters, so it's possible. Costly.
So in this, so we don't have local control, the Board of Select can't, or we can't put it on a local ballot to say we don't want that in our town?
Not till a state election.
We passed, so we put restrictions on the medical, the locations of medical marijuana facilities in town, at, we did that at town meeting, right after it passed first time.
Right, everybody did, everybody did.
And so there are rules about where it can be located in relationship to a park, a playground, a school.
But not now, not with this ballot.
Right, so like the one that I think has either started application or is talking about, is one of the only places in town it could be, in T-Ticket.
And it was just recently, I think, in front of the Board of Select.
Right.
So that one would become, it would, that would fall into that rule that we passed already.
Thank you.
Unless this passes.
Unless that passes.
And then nobody, you can't zone it anywhere, they're allowed to be wherever there's commercial... So most towns have medicinal marijuana zoning. I have it in Sandwich, it's Jan Sebastian. But if this passes, anywhere that there is, you know, commercial, you know, stores, whatever, you, and every town has to have no fewer than twenty percent of their liquor stores. So you cannot say no, so we have fifteen, I believe, fifteen liquor stores, not restaurants, fifteen liquor stores, we have to have three, we can't say no, unless we do a special election and we do, and that's not until 2018. It's a very complicated ballot, I, like I said, when I first read it, I went, oh, regulation and taxation of marijuana, this is great, we'll know where it's, where it's coming from. And then you read the twenty-five pages and you get, well, twenty-four, and it, and it's, it's quite scary. So I encourage everybody to read it, and I understand why you don't want to take a vote, I really appreciate that, actually. I just am here to hopefully get the message out, and that hopefully you will get the message out if you are in agreement with myself.
More questions for Denise.
I'm inclined to not have a vote because of that, the reasons that were aforementioned, but I do appreciate your efforts, because I for one don't want to see the school start time discussion start to go with, let's make it noonish, or something like that, so, thank you.
I'm not following that, and I'm not going... Any other comments or questions for Denise?
Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I don't see Mr. Mock here.
So...
All right, we move on. Next is the presentation of the school improvement plans. Who gets to go first? Guys, want to do rock, paper, scissors back there, or what?
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Justine Dale, the principal at East Falmouth. I am here to present our school improvement plan, I think you all have a copy of it, and I have four goals that I'm just going to briefly touch on, and the first goal is to continue to invest in all students through close monitoring of academic and social progress.
Hold on, does everybody have copies of it?
It looks like this.
Can you just pass down some more of the packets, I think?
Yes.
Does anyone have one?
That's okay.
No.
Anybody else need one?
Anybody need one?
We're all good?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am going right to page thirteen, which is where my first goal is. So in our district theme of investing in all students, at East Falmouth, we are closely monitoring not only the academic progress of our students, but social progress, and we're doing that through a number of action steps, and that's the third section there for that goal. At a very first staff meeting, or I think it was the second staff meeting, all classroom teachers knew exactly who the students were in front of them, with regards to their subgroups and their risk levels. I am closely monitoring attendance this year and tardiness of all students, especially those at high risk, and we're communicating and involving families and getting community support involved with helping us with our attendance. I was quite taken back that the percentage at my school was about fifteen percent for chronically absent, and that was worrisome to me, thinking that's eighteen school days, or, you know, it looks like two days per month. And so one of the things we just recently did, it says there's challenge five, we took an idea that was just recently published in a Marshall memo of another school's idea in Michigan, where they did a challenge five, which is strive for less than five days absent in your school year. We just promoted that in a flyer that went home to every family and announced it to the students just yesterday. I cannot believe this, but today, at half day of school, six students were absent. I normally have two pages of students absent, so I had six, and three of those were preschoolers, now including preschool. So that was a big celebration today. So we will continue to focus on attendance at East Falmouth. Really excited that we have school-based therapy, and you saw the nice article in the Enterprise with regards to our partnership with Gosnold, that is new for us this year. We also expanded the Connect program and are working closely with this specialized district program in having both a primary and an intermediate classroom for the, for students, and that's new to us this year as well, and the program's running very nicely this year. And something else that's new this year is that the district has the team professional development for at least one representative at each grade level to really focus on monitoring the achievement, academic achievement of our top learners, and so we are excited to get that started. I'm going to just go on in light of time. Goal two is to enrich high-achieving students, and that would be exactly what I just mentioned about the team PD is one of the pieces. We also continue to use reflex math for our math fact fluency, which is quite motivating to many students with regards to speed on their math facts. We also are doing a lot of work with community partners and having volunteers come into our classrooms and helping classroom teachers differentiate to the top learners and/or to remedial students, and we really enjoy the volunteers that are consistently coming in each and every week, and the teachers can plan on that, and the students look forward to that. And this year, we are really focusing on differentiating in math, especially at grades three and four, and we are using Khan Academy to help support our Math in Focus curriculum and our instruction to students. You saw that for East Falmouth School, our grade four scores last year in math were phenomenal. We really, really appreciated that increase in our percentage of students that were proficient in higher, and unfortunately, in third grade, our scores were not so great in math, and now those third graders are fourth graders, so we have our work cut out for us this year and are willing to take on that challenge, and we're ready for it. Goal three is to enrich all students through variety of before and after-school programs. We have, we're very fortunate and have our PTL sponsor, our before and after-school enrichment programs. Right now, this year, we have it, it's kind of on hold until we get our schools all back and relocated, but we are planning and making plans to continue to expand our before and after-school enrichment programs for all students. We are also going to be expanding the scholarships for all students to participate in our before and after-school programs. We're reaching out to our kids' club students who are at school early in the morning or in the afternoons, and really trying to find out who has not participated in the last couple of years and who we need to help support, and most of the times it turns into be transportation. So we're looking at, you know, doing some various things with aligning partners for carpooling, that type of thing. We did a lot of outreach this year and continue to do that for communicating about the kids' club opportunity, this is our before and after-school programs, just wanted to make sure that all our incoming kindergarten families knew that we had this program in place and shared a lot of the activities that they do in kids' club, and we did some outreach in the summer, we did some outreach on early release days, and really got a great number of students involved in that this year. We continue to have the community's grandparents support group at East Falmouth, and we have a number of students in grades three and four that would not participate in the craft fair, which is an annual event that we have, and this year, as always, but this year even more so, we are truly targeting the students that don't have the level of support that we would hope at home to be able to make a craft, and we're helping them at school making crafts so that they can participate, at least in the date program with, with the craft. So doing everything we possibly can to make sure that everything that we do is, is available and accessible to, to everybody. We're doing a lot, hoping to have a great number of students at the Vips Elementary Track Meet. I also want to make note that on the same day as our Vips Track Meet, East Falmouth School does have a curling team representing Falmouth Public Schools for the competition tournament, we have a team to support the Falmouth Service Center, and we are trying to raise a thousand dollars, because we know that Service Center supports our community and also our school in so many ways, and so we're very anxious and hoping to be at two places at one time on November nineteenth. Okay, and finally, goal four is just, this goal is to support and encourage new teachers, along with others, to embrace the district's mission and the school goals about looking at each and every student. And I think this is an important goal for us at East Falmouth, because we do have approximately eleven teachers that are still pre-PTS, so pre-professional status teachers, and we really want them to stay, because that's one of the things that you can see in public education, is you get new teachers on board and then leave in a few years. So we are trying to embrace them and doing a multitude of things here. One thing that happened by default this year, which actually worked really to my advantage, is that we did have the need to combine our third grade classrooms to create space, and by doing that, I had four sections of third grade, I combined two classrooms into one. So what I did is I had two veteran third grade teachers, and they were lined up with two newer third grade teachers, ironically happened to be their mentors, so they've had a couple of months now of co-teaching with their mentor, and I can't think of a better in-the-field experience to, to really be supportive to new teachers, so that's one thing that happened, just by osmosis. We also have our school-based Special Education Building Administrator, she is doing professional development with the teaching assistants, the special needs teaching assistants in the building, and she's doing that monthly. Very appreciative of the grade-level leaders that we have in the district and their communication, consistent communication back to their teams. And finally, the last bullet there, my Title I staff is very, they're very veteran staff, and very professional what they do, and they've really taken a leadership role in the building to train and to support the new teachers with the various things that we do. I have diagnostic reading assessments, we have the new level literacy intervention, just basic school-wide assessments. So what they're doing is, we don't just put the new teachers out there and say, do it, we're supporting them and helping them and encouraging them and guiding them and being there as resources, and that really, you have to think about that in public education, it doesn't come very easily because of all the other things that we do. So I think it's very important that we have that as a goal for our building. Any questions?
Questions for Justine. Walter?
Could you explain to me, Justine, the police liaison partnership and your goal number one?
Sure.
Supporting home and school connection?
Sure, that's a new program that was shared with us at our administrative council meeting. Each school has a liaison or two from the police force that sit on our crisis teams with us, our safety committees, and they're available to us to ask questions of. Sometimes we can contact them if we need some background information on a situation, perhaps we had to make a call about something, we don't know the status of it. So it's a really nice relationship with the police force, with the principals, to be able to communicate better.
Leah?
I'm going to goal three. Was, were there families that weren't aware of kids' club? Was, were there families that weren't aware of kids' club? Is that...
Yes, especially incoming kindergarteners.
Okay, so targeting the incoming...
And also new transient families that are moving into the district.
Okay.
Into our school.
And so, for the additional, what type of additional opportunities are available now for them to learn about kids' club? How, how have you implemented that?
Well, we, what we already did, we did a lot over the summer, and we did some at the beginning of the year. Every time we have a new student, we automatically make sure that we sit down with the family and talk about it, and then we take them over and introduce them to our director, who happens to work in our kitchen, which is lovely to be able to make the face-to-face connection. And in our weekly communication to families, we'll put out there that we have kids' club available, especially on the early release days, because we have many families that, that will panic on those days especially, "What am I gonna do?" And they don't realize that we actually offer kids' club on the early release days as well. So it's this constant communication and awareness.
And then with the making crafts piece, is that happening during kids' club, or when, when can it happen during the school day? I know how busy the school day is.
Right. It can happen during a child's lunch and recess time. Sometimes it can happen with their mentors. It can happen, we have, I've talked about it in the past, kind of an informal program called Under the Wing, where certain adults and staff members have signed up to work with students that they're paired up with a student through the adjustment counselor, and they're kind of just keeping an eye on that student, and then they can talk to them and find out where they are with, with their craft. And if they need help, then they can do it during the lunch or the recess time.
So it's...
Or a kids' club if they're in there early or in the afternoon. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
More questions for Justine?
Just actually a comment. Justine, I wanted to just commend yourself, Deb Pensance and Tim McLaughlin for working together. It's not lost on, on myself, and I don't, I think I could speak for everybody else too as well of, of the challenge of having the schools be absorbed into both at East and T-Ticket at East and at Morse Pond. I was fortunate enough to, you know, within doing the project over the last several weeks, to be in East Falmouth three or four times, in addition of Morse Pond as well. And I think it speaks a lot to Dr. Pensance, yourself and, and Tim McLaughlin at how you've worked in concert, how there's still the individuality of the schools. Everybody has their own self-pride. There's still things like logistics of pressing the buzzer.
[laughing]
And that who answers that, and it's all organized as to...
Right.
As to who's gonna do that and who's not, and that sort of thing. So I, I had already commended Deb and Tim, but this is my chance to commend you. Great job on that.
Thank you, thank you. I have to thank my staff. I'd say, you know, we have been working well together, but the staff, especially the ones who are impacted, you know, Jim is outside every day and music is on the stage or in the classrooms, in the third grade especially. They really have been peace builders and have been giving it their best shot and just looking at everything with positive intentions. And, and I'm really, really happy with their patience and their cooperation, and have a great team.
So, I, questions, this is as much for the other principals as it is for you. So we got a little peek ahead when we have the school improvement plans for Morse Pond and for Lawrence and for the high school, and they all talked about chronic absenteeism and so forth. And Tim, I think, was the one who made the, the comment that, you know, fifth and sixth graders, and certainly it applies to pre-K to fourth graders, it's not so much about the kid. It's not about, about the kid being absent. And so, you know, I looked ahead, took a little peek ahead, and it's in all of your plans and so forth. But what I also looked at is, I also looked at the chronic absenteeism rate in the schools. And, you know, it, it does follow, I think, what we all recognize as the socioeconomic lines in our community and so forth. So I guess my question to all of you is, what, what are we doing, you know, cohesively as a school system to really address the families here? Because this, this isn't about the kids. It's not about the kids being, being absent. It's, it's, there's a lot more going on here than, you know, a third grader being absent 15 days a year.
Right. I think, you know, the first and foremost and most important thing that we're doing this year is we're talking about it, and we are making it a priority and letting our families know that it is important to come to school, and it's important at kindergarten, and it's important at preschool. For me, in my building, that's really where I'm working with Lani Cook Johnson on that as well. I want them to realize it's not just important first grade up. And so, just communicating that fact, and then getting the students to be engaged enough in the school where they want to come to school. And oftentimes, it's, it's the students that do want to come to school and have a little sniffle or something like that, we need to say, "This is what we need for you to come to school. This is when you should stay home." And, you know, the Challenge Five, staying home, you know, I mean, being, missing less than five days is important because we all do get sick. And I don't want students to come to school if they're sick, you know? And also, reaching out to the families and asking them. On my own principal goals, one of the things that I did this year as a goal is I am communicating with my families every single month that are missing two days a month. So everybody who missed two days last month heard from me. So what happened? What's going on? And, and finding out a little bit about that. And we do have a number of families that schedule vacations, and that's one thing too, we're just trying to discourage it and get the kids kind of motivated to, to be at school and, and take on the challenge.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Justine.
Thank you.
If I could just make a comment about some of the work that's going on in the elementary schools and at Morse Pond and Morse, is that the adjustment counselors are reaching out to families. So you have the principals doing their level, and then you have the adjustment counselors actually reaching out to the families to say, "How can we support you in getting your child here every day? Is it a transportation issue? Is it, what, what's really going on?" And trying to sort of drill down into why the student isn't there? Because I agree, oftentimes, it's a systems issue, not necessarily, and an individual child issue.
It would seem so important to address it with our elementary students. I'm, I'm willing to bet if we did some sort of longitudinal study and looked at kids at the high school who are chronically absent, they would be the same kids that were chronically absent in elementary school. So if we can stem that tide now, I think it serves us well moving forward.
And I agree, I think, for the majority, and we've done some work around that in our admin council monthly, but also in our summer sessions. I think a piece that is somewhat new over the last two years that I have seen is that, I would say 80% of the time that's true, there is something that seems to be happening in high school where the anxiety and depression go way up. And so you do start to see a pattern of absenteeism that you didn't see. But I would say the majority, you can trace back to kindergarten, first and second grade.
Just to, just to build on Nancy's comment, which is very important, I think the, the issue that needs to be promoted, and I had this experience when I had my own education job, is to teach the parents and the students that not only is this a learning issue, it's a character development and accepting responsibility issue. And their responsibility is to be in school. And the parents, the scary thing is, the parent's responsibility is to make sure they get there. So I think if we stress those two things in terms of communicating with parents and say, "Hey, it's more than just, you know, missing a math class or missing a history class. It's all about getting them in the right habits to have a successful life." I think that's important.
Okay.
This is actually from Nancy. So when, is there data being collected now when, so when the adjustment counselors are reaching out to the families, is there data being collected as to why it is that kids aren't coming to school?
I think they do have that information.
Yeah.
Okay. But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just, one of the things that we're finding is that sometimes parents struggle just getting the little ones out the door, just in preparedness. So we sent home something recently that just gave routines, things that you can do the night before, and just trying to teach families backpack, laying out the clothes, the breakfast, you know, all those different things. And also, even at elementary level, if they're having, talking about being anxious to come to school, the adjustment counselor's there to help them for that as well.
And looking forward, really, in terms of Charlie's office, how do we build some kind of system within the education system, some kind of a family resource center that supports families, giving them some skills and some strategies? And I think that the issues that we're seeing are growing exponentially, and we have to make it part of what we do. And I think that's really difficult. But are we collecting data to support one of the things that we're looking for further down the line? Absolutely.
Because I think about how hard it is to get everyone ready for school in the morning. And, you know, if you, if you don't have transportation at home and you, and the kids miss that bus, you know, there's not another option. So that's, and I, but I think the reaching out about kids' club, knowing that that is an option for families, so, you know, that could alleviate some of the stress. The hard thing though is at the elementary level, when there's not a late bus, you know, that you do have to, there needs to be transportation at the end also, so that's. And we only have, we have late bus at the high school and at Morse Pond and at Lawrence.
First, I wanted to thank everyone in this room for all the ways you guide and support our learning community. Rose Moran was gonna be with me tonight, but she's dealing with a family matter, so I know she would also want to say thank you too. We have three goals at Mullen Hall, and they are tightly aligned to the strategic plan. The first one talks about our collaborative teams, really taking responsibility for student achievement with an emphasis on implementation, execution, and monitoring. We can write all kinds of fancy plans, but we've got to get in and really execute and monitor. And we, we are revisiting this goal, repeating this goal, if you will, because of some really successful outcomes that we saw last year with all students across grade levels, in particular with a certain focus on our performance indexes with PARC. So the action steps give you a lot of information about our grade-level teamwork and working to support struggling students, but we really want to have observable processes. And that means that I'm in those meetings or looking at how teachers are evaluating students and really looking at confounding factors and looking at a range of data points to understand more fully what is happening for a student. We really want to focus on academic planning and other habits that affect success in school and life. And part of that is really a robustness, and we are looking to address health and well-being. So we look at those collective results for student learning. Some of the most important instructional improvements come from teachers having time together to collaborate and talk with one another and deepen their understanding of their content, to help each other with the challenges, so really maximizing the use of teacher-to-teacher collaboration. We're supporting the level literacy intervention adoption, along with all the other elementary schools and Morse Pond. We're introducing some math support for students in grades two, three, and four. Our treasure hunt is underway to look for pockets of excellence. What's working? And let's talk about it and share. I have effective effort lunches with students, so teachers refer students. And four times a year, over the course of a week, I'll have lunch with about 100 students. And we call it fancy lunch, and I sit up on the stage, and students are referred just for having effective effort. So they could come because they've been working hard on their writing, or they've improved with their homework, or they've been maybe thinking better about their own regulation or conflict resolution. So we like our fancy lunches. We're also really on board with the team professional development that's happening in the district, and that is to address the needs of our academically accelerated students. And in our school safety discipline portion of our school improvement plan, you will see a number of strategies that we are bringing to students that really address positive behavioral interventions. Closing the student, closing the student achievement gap has really been an emphasized point at all of our leadership meetings. And I can tell you a little bit about our successful strategies and action steps, and we're repeating some of those action steps again because of our outcomes. Contributing to our collaborative teams and taking responsibility for student learning comes with being an effective, high-performing team. And our high-performing team surveys, we just did one last week, and I can, I have the results here for you. We really look at our clarity of purpose, our accountability, our team structure, and our trust. So our high-performing team survey is feedback to me. How are we doing? And what do you need from me as a leader to make sure we are accountable, we're working well together, our structures and our trust are in place to keep moving forward with this important work? And then the support of the grade-level leader structure has been wonderful. Zach's work with our grade-level leaders and what they come back with to meet with teams has been really important. When I think about their work with Math in Focus Unit Organization, vocabulary instruction, writing instruction, reading street supplements, the kindergarten math instruction work has been really helpful, and the writing instruction along with the review of student work, all contribute to our collaborative teams, really collectively looking at students and taking that responsibility with an emphasis on implementation, execution, and monitoring. Our goal is that 80% of our students will achieve their personalized goals. And a personalized goal could be reading, fluency, comprehension. It could be in math. It could be maybe a behavioral goal or a social skill goal. So we will continue with our work in this direction with that intended outcome. Goal number two aligns with the access and equity part of the Falmouth Public Schools Strategic Plan. You can see the grid, the Mullen Hall School comparable schools report. So this kind of lines us up with our similar schools across the Commonwealth. We have many things in common with T-Ticket and with Morse Pond and our other schools here, but these schools have similar numbers of students, similar numbers of ELL students, similar numbers of students perhaps on special education plans, and it doesn't look good for Mullen Hall and Falmouth. So we are diving in, and this is a goal that also is our professional goal as a whole learning community. And I have some action steps here for you. We are, we're trying to find ways to address many of the issues you just brought up when, when Justine was here. How do we get five and six-year-olds to school when they don't drive? So when we walk into classrooms, we're just saying to them, "Raise your hand if you're here." And so, everybody can do that. So we're cheering and we're celebrating. You know, we, we just thank them for coming, we ask them to come back the next day. And we have found that early release days are days of low attendance, and I think some families have a hard time with transportation or perhaps kids' club, maybe with payment. So we want to help with scholarships there. But we're also going to begin work with Dead Calum with STEM boosters. And we want our early release days to be STEM-based cooperative learning days. So kids know early release days are STEM days, STEAM days at Mullen Hall. So we're starting that work with maybe our first day being a STEAM/STEM day in January. Let's see. I sent 77 letters. I've had 16 meetings with parents. Zach and Sonya just gave us some E-WIS data that really looks at attendance and the impact. My meetings with families talk about what do we need to know? Here's the data, but what do we need to know? Is anybody anxious, concerned, upset? Is the morning routine, is that a challenge? Do we need to help make connections? So we are really meeting with people to help understand their personal story. There are families going on vacation a lot, and I think, I've been talking with teachers about this. It's a hard stand to take, but families ask, "Can you give me homework?" And I think we have to say no, because I think it masks the absence. So I'm kind of floating that out there for Falmouth Public to think about. We will be recruiting volunteers. We, we know who some of our students with the most concerning attendance patterns are, and we'll be recruiting attendance buddies. So for a staff member to just maybe take a peek and celebrate with someone for being in, celebrating someone's attendance and being in school, we really want to have those celebrations. We've used attendancework.com, dot org, I'm sorry, and we have strategy reviews with our front office teams. Here's the information about STEM boosters, and then we really are celebrating whenever we can. Here's the information about STEM boosters, and then we really are celebrating whenever we can as well. The last part of the goal is just really rationale and justification about how important it is. When I think about the money the district spends on professional development around team and grade level leaders and writing and math in focus, differentiated instruction, we're spending a lot of money and kids aren't with us enough. We really have to prioritize this. So, we have a high degree of focus on this at Mullen Hall this year. Goal number three, we really want to continue our engagement and strengthen partnerships and practices to really increase educational experiences for students. And I think this really aligns with an increase in student performance, because we're finding engaging ways to have students learn during the school day. Here are some of our action steps. We have hired a garden coordinator. We have a beautiful garden, it is a lovely classroom. And it's not an, it just can't be an add-on for a teacher, and I'm going to do the garden. It would be if someone told me I had to teach Spanish, I'd work hard, but it just wouldn't happen as seamlessly. So, we have a garden coordinator now. We also have a partnership with the Falmouth Police Liaisons. Officer Moore has come to a staff meeting. We're working to get therapy dogs at Mullen Hall. And we have four committees featuring a high degree of involvement with families. The walking track has focused on the installation planning, funding, sponsors, and the opening event, the kickoff event. Our wellness committee is addressing universal themes of wellness and developing action plans. The garden committee really helped with the hiring of the garden coordinator, and we're looking to maximize the use of our learning space. And our playground committee is organizing repairs and improvement. Student government program begins next month. I don't know what they're going to be doing, but I'm certainly excited to find out on this new adventure called student government. So, last year we had 124 students and there were 10 teams. So, I look forward to that work with kids. Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank is really helping kids understand financial literacy. We're growing with VIPS. We have a partnership and participation with HOE. STEM boosters and early release lesson planning is underway. We work with so many other educational programs in town. The High School Sense Programs, Lawrence School Volunteers come, Falmouth Academy is with us, and Upper Cape Regional Voc Tech comes. And having these secondary-level students in with the elementary kids, it's really exciting to see. Suzie Hartman in Falmouth Human Services helps us. The Carousel of Light has been in, you know, an active part of our front lawn for a few years. FEF grants are underway and we hope to apply for more in March. Karma Choice lessons are underway, and our safety team meetings have been held as well. And we're proposing a portable wax museum to go to Atria in, in May. Grade three Wax Museum is a pretty dynamic educational unit. And having seen some grandparents and elders come in for this event, they're really quite taken with students' work and students' presentation. I think it's too much to have the elders come to Mullen Hall. The hallways are filled, it's kind of crowded, I think it's a little noisy perhaps. So, we're working on a portable wax museum to go to Atria. And we're always looking to coordinate scholarships for programming for students.
Question for Nancy, Walter.
Nancy, I wanted to compliment you and comment on your recognition of effort. Again, I think this is one of the most important things that you can teach students, is that effort in being successful is 90% of the equation. And a lot of students just say, oh, well, so-and-so's smarter than I am. But if they get recognized for working on becoming better, I would always tell them that. I said, we'll pass them eventually, because they'll coast and they'll stop work. Another thing I wanted to comment on was your unwillingness to be understanding on people taking vacation during school days. I think parents need to understand, and maybe the message is, what message do you think you're sending to your child by saying, taking this vacation is more important than you being in school?
There certainly are some, I agree, there certainly are some very, very special family events. I know one family traveled to New Zealand for a wedding, and I certainly understand.
Yeah, something like that's different.
So, I, I support those, but the every October Disney trips are something that is recurring.
Ski trips I used to run into. And when I was the athletic director, my rule was, if you leave during planned athletic time and you're a starter, you won't be starting when you come back. You're not going to miss a week and then get into that starting position. So, I would try and teach the kids through the parents that there is a penalty to pay for being what I call irresponsible. So, that's good.
Our door decorating day last year, the theme was a growth mindset and around effective effort. So, that kind of lines up with something you just recognized.
Yeah, that's important.
Yeah.
So, Nancy, you brought up the half-day thing, and actually, Dr. Del, you were saying about that you only had six absentee days for a half-day. But I was wondering if we could really look at that data a little bit about what those days look like, those half-days? Because I'm sure that it is a struggle for a lot of families. I know it's a struggle for me. And the cost of Kids Club is, is pretty high for those half, if you have two or three kids in the school. So, I'm curious as to if we are seeing lots of absences during those days? Because how many half-days are there a year?
Six.
Six. Six. So, that could potentially be six of 10 days. And easily, a kid can be sick four other days and get to that 10 limit. So, I would be really curious to seeing what the trend is with those half-days. And, you know, if we see that there is a trend, kind of rethinking maybe those PD days are full days, not half-days, and it looks a little different.
I think that's a really good point. And also, I would hope that when the calendar committee gets underway, that would be something you would consider. It's also difficult for us to do professional development because of the staggering of the stop and start times of the different buildings. So, trying to do professional development if you're district-wide, which all my, my central office people are, you start with the high school and then, you know, there's a little, little overlap, and then you got to go to Lawrence, and you can't have everyone together doing the same thing. And I just question the effectiveness of that, number one, but also the impact on families. And I think my administrative staff would love to have full days instead of half-days. But that would be something you would have to look at in terms of the calendar, but I don't know that anyone would be opposed to that in terms of the administration.
And another bonus to that is that potentially that could be added on to long weekends, and that would give families opportunity to take those vacations, not during those vacation weeks, but during extended weekend time.
So, we have talked about that.
Other questions for Nancy.
The portable wax museum, I think is a great idea. That just is such a great event and the kids, for those of you who don't know, the kids, you know, stand still and, you know, and do whoever it was. And my daughter was a really good Amelia Earhart. But, and then on the, on the playground committee, I'd suggest that maybe you might reach out to some of the folks who were involved originally to be part of that, because it was such a great committee. And I, I would love to be involved, I'm not able to serve a committee, but I'm happy to do the grunt work, give me a paintbrush and I'll be right there.
So, right now, it's been at the DPW level around structural improvements. And at our community meeting today, we always have our student piece builders and a community piece builder. So, Sean from DPW got a huge round of applause from students. So, the next phase is moving on to staining and painting, so I'll let you know.
But one thing that, I don't know why, it just jumped into my brain. But I always appreciated that the maintenance of the playground was something that the kids owned. You know, they can't be painting, but when the pile of mulch would show up and they'd be out there like kicking it around to try and level it out, like they owned that, that was their space. And not only is it great just because it's community service, but they're outside, you know, owning it. Yeah.
Other questions for Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Where are we going? These guys got to work tomorrow, we got to speed it up.
Thanks to the committee for all of your support. And thanks to my school council too, we were able to do some work on this school improvement plan at our October meeting, and they had some input. So, starting with my first school improvement goal, this was the germ of this idea started last year in Common Planning Time with my teacher teams, that we lacked a tangible guide to our curriculum, how we deliver instruction at each grade level, something that we could all refer to and have common ground as to what we teach month by month. I've also been asked by parents, you know, if they enroll in a certain grade level, you know, what will my child do this year? Just give me a basic like overview of what the year will look like. So, my first goal is centered on creating this document for the school for this year. Our curriculum's aligned and we deliver instruction based on the standards, but we don't have an actual document that holds all that information in one place. It's also would be a great place to capture best practice. I have a very veteran staff that when they leave, it would be a shame for all that great expertise and lessons they've developed over the years to walk out the door with them. So, this is a place to preserve some of that great best practice that inevitably we'll refer back to and we're looking for a new way to teach something that it'll live on. So, in the action steps, I've aligned kind of with our school calendar this year, how we're going to roll this out. So, I've created a universal template for all of our grade levels to use to start doing this work, and it's being done monthly. Mid-year, we'll take a look and review this at our Common Planning Time to make sure it's, you know, capturing what we hoped it would, and going forward to the end of the year and do a review. I think it's a pretty ambitious goal in the sense that I don't think it'll be work I can complete in one year with our grade level teams, certainly not to the level of depth that I'd hope it would have. But I think at the end of this year, it'd be reasonable to say that we'd be able to capture at least the major topics we teach and how that looks with certain major assignments and written assignments and assessments. And then we can dig into a deeper level next year. My second goal, looking at our school's achievement data this year from the past PARC exam, although in this document I refer to it as MCAS, because going forward, that's what it will be. One celebration that we saw was that our growth scores for our fourth-grade students, so how much they improved from third to fourth grade, looking at the high-needs subgroup, we saw a nice increase in both ELA and math for that subgroup. And you can see the data that's in there. And so, this goal centers on continuing that increase in our growth for our high-needs subgroup. And really to kind of capture that, it's providing access to excellence for all of our students. That that subgroup continues to grow, and we close that achievement gap that we've been working on as a district for the past two years. So, a lot of the action steps for that goal center on, from my role, effective observation and feedback given to teachers about how we're implementing best practice to drive that growth. Looking at using our IST process, we have students who were brought up as cases where they may be struggling and, you know, what can we do to support some of our learners? That that process helps us document that data, what the intervention plans look like, monitoring our special education referrals. It's also a place where we can be doing progress monitoring for our tiered interventions, and that happens at my grade level meetings as well. How well are we keeping an eye on the data and how students are performing? And also shifting our plans more fluidly than perhaps we have in the past, where if we see a student is really responding to an intervention, maybe moving on to something different, or if they're not, we can also change and try something that would work a bit better before you wait too long. Oftentimes, it would wait till you get to the next set of data points, which is three times a year. So, just a way to do that more frequently. And then expanding what we look at in our IST cases as well to support learners and looking beyond just academics, but also the social and emotional supports that they may need so that they can access curriculum and achieve more. And so, through that, we'll also take a look at patterns that come up this year. I want to take a real good dive into the data that we have for looking at attendance as a piece of this or disciplinary referrals and how that all fits together to help drive achievement. And for me, also, looking to work with teachers, especially our veteran staff, to going beyond just classroom observations of what they're teaching in the moment, but also working with them to, so that I'm part of the planning process and a, and part of the data decision-making process, so that I see how they're making decisions about what type of instruction they're delivering. Third goal, and this is the one where I really tie, I think, pretty closely to what you've heard from some other schools, that we'd like to target interventions for our chronically absent students. And I look at the data for North Falmouth, it's not an alarming number perhaps. When you compare it to state levels, it's fairly commensurate, but I think one's too many. You know, we could never stop looking at this issue and what we could do to help improve it. So, running the numbers from Power School last year, looking at my roster, I could see that we had 69 students who were absent 10 days or more out of a population last year that was roughly 325. And again, this year, I think what I'd like to discover is what some of the trends are, what the stories are behind a lot of this data. I think we have referred to the half-days, you know, what are our absentee rates on those half-days? Who are they? Is it the same families over and over again because they don't have transportation? So, what does that tell us and what can we do to fix it? I have a weekly front office team meeting with the assistant principal, the school adjustment counselor, school nurse. And we take a look at cases, you know, what's happening with attendance, who's having difficulty in classroom? But this is where we can really focus on that attendance piece. And, and just as we've, we've heard before from some of the other schools, really intervening a little bit more often and sooner, especially from my office, that we're making the phone calls, we're making the connections with families to say, just tell me what's going on. And then bringing them in for meetings as well, so we can really hear that story here, how we can support perhaps increasing their attendance. And looking at some community partnerships we could perhaps work with to help us in that work. And then at the end of the year, I'd certainly like to go back through all that we discovered and find out, was, was there a trend? Were there particular pockets that we could really make a difference or, you know, change our practice to improve this? But we noticed the same trends, I think, from other schools, where we see chronic absenteeism based on vacations and sometimes with illness, and that's where I think having a nurse as part of this team is very valuable for families. And our fourth goal for this year centers on the creation of our safety committee, the safety team that we were asked to have at every school that has been absent from North Falmouth for a few years, but we restarted, I think, very successfully. We had our first meeting and it was a large group. And our school liaison officers from the police department are now part of that safety committee. We have all stakeholders throughout the schools, our custodian kitchen staff, secretarial staff, teacher volunteers, and just really trying to come up with what are our major concerns and documenting this in a really tangible way and having a plan going forward for how we're going to rectify any issues that we discover. And I can tell you from our first meeting, having the police presence and their viewpoint on what some of the safety concerns are, it was very revealing and really helped to focus our work. So, we're hopeful, we're hopeful as we go forward to really tighten up the safety of our school and always being able to identify and refine what we do.
Questions for Tim.
I'm sorry, I have, I have another absentee question.
Sure.
Just to clarify about the chronically absent.
Sure.
It really, it is for any student who's not there, even if they have a medical excuse, they still receive that letter. And I think, you know, that's, that's where there's so much leaving out of, you know, students who might get the flu, right?
Right.
Be out for two weeks and then boom, that's the 10 days. Versus a kid who is out for 10 days, doesn't have a medical excuse, and that's a pattern every year. You know, there's just.
Correct.
There's so many differences and.
Yeah, when I think about an improvement plan, I think about, you know, what are we going to do at the end of this year so it looks different than what we did before? You know, so what's the improvement? And I think the improvement would be the response from the school, how soon it happens, to what degree, and that we really start setting a climate of, you know, it's important to be here, to really emphasize that message, make that the climate amongst the families so that we can help reduce some of this.
And that you understand also if it's a sickness that you don't want them.
Right, I mean, there's, of course, right. And that's where, like I said, the school nurse can be a really important asset for us to help families understand when you should keep someone home and when you shouldn't, and that they can be a resource to answer questions families have, like, should I keep them home for this or shouldn't I, or when is it okay to send them? Because certainly we don't want kids coming to school sick.
So, when does an excused absence, is that in the high school? Is there an excuse versus an unexcused absence that happens at the high school level?
In terms of credits.
Yeah.
That's where it becomes an issue. If it's excused, then you, when you go to appeal, you have that excuse and they can't count that. The, we've struggled with attendance in this district for many, many, many years. I can't tell you how many attendance committees I have been on, right, Justine, Nancy? And it's very, very difficult about the way it's coded, what you do with it. But I think the principals really look at students, you know, if a child's out for 10 days and the parent is calling you and saying they have the doctors now, it's the student who's absent a day. absent a day, a week kind of thing, Mondays typically every day that they're absent, Fridays are another day. You start to look at patterns, it becomes really evident. And when you have a student who's sick, that parent is calling almost every day saying, you know, "I have the note and I'm going to keep them home," but you can see the patterns with kids and they, you can tell.
It creeps up on you, really.
You can tell.
Honestly, it starts like with a one here, one there, but before you know it, they're at that 10.
Mm-hmm.
And you kind of look back, how did we get here?
Yeah.
Those are really the cases that we want to focus on most.
And you haven't been here a whole week in two months.
Yeah.
That's, you really start to look at-
And putting it in terms of they-
The inconsistencies.
Yes.
Yeah. Or understanding what the number 15 would mean, like that's three full weeks of school. When you talk with families about the impact of chronic absenteeism, what that actually translates to in instructional time in hours and minutes is really powerful. Having that conversation face to face, I think, really makes a much greater impact.
Other questions?
Just a comment on attendance. It seems, obviously, every school has that concern and everybody's working on that concern, whether it's adjustment counselors, whether it's contacting parents, whether it's bringing new parents into the building. There's all positive things going on to obviously enhance those kids to come in. I think in the spring, we need to do a follow-up as principal to school committee to just see where we've gone with this. You know, we all have this as a goal and where's the goal going? And I think we need to look at that, the totality of the school year and just hopefully we find some inroads where we get that better attendance, where we get that, you know, we don't have to worry about those 69 kids, maybe we're down to 49. And each year, we can chip away on that. But I think we, you know, every, every school that gives a school improvement has that concern. Every school has that as a goal. And let's look at that. Let's take a spring board meeting, school committee meeting, and let's, let's project, where have we gone? What have we done? Because everybody has a goal, everybody has something in mind. So, let's just kind of reject that and work on it.
And that's what we do in April and May. They will come back and go right back to these plans and be able to chart out the progress that the, the schools have made on their school improvement plan.
Good. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. Last but not least, Deb.
The principal, we have a building.
No building.
Get me back to my building!
She's got two buildings!
That's going to be my goal, my goal.
That's your goal, right? I gotta go back.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're going to start with attendance. Just in case you haven't heard enough about attendance, my first goal is attendance and we monitor student attendance daily, weekly, and monthly, and we identify our at-risk students. And we work in partnership with our parents and, or whatever the significant adult is in our children's lives. And we also involve other agencies when necessary. So, here, we like to start out with communication, try to communicate with the families, as you've heard from the other principals, to try to turn things around in a friendly manner, try to determine how we can get the child into the school, try to set up a meeting with the parent, everything you just heard from the other principals. Sometimes it is transportation. I've worked with Greg Kennedy. Sometimes we can set up transportation or alternate transportation. Sometimes it is, you know, another factor like a vacation or other things that you have heard. And then other times, we do have to set up the agencies that I've listed on here. And we've also, luckily, we have this year, the liaisons from the police department and they've been great at doing some home visits and found that sometimes our children aren't there when they make the home visits. So, that's been, it's been very helpful this year to have them involved. So, the second one is a combination of two goals that I had last year. Last year, we had, for T-Ticket, we had a goal that was for RTI and another one for data collection. So, this year, they've been rolled into one goal, that is to implement and sustain a collaborative and accountable culture of using data to improve instructional practice and decision-making that results in improved student success through the effective use of the instructional support team in response to intervention. So, they work together because you really can't have an instructional support team without using data. So, the teachers monitor student success through the use of data. And you'll see here that it's establishing a system for identifying students who fall below the benchmarks. So, we're using a set of warning indicators to collect throughout the school year, things like A reading, A math, attendance data, report card grades, behavior reports, student work samples, all kinds of sets of data to identify our warning indicators. We're identifying owners responsible for regular data collection, so it could be the school nurse, it might be an adjustment counselor, it might be a teacher. And then we're identifying at-risk students during our common planning time or IST time. And we strategically provide at-risk students with the appropriate interventions so that when we meet, we determine together what kind of strategies we think would best meet the needs of our students. And then we, I or my assistant conduct mini-observations, so we'll go in once the interventions are in place and work with the teachers to just see what's going on, whether or not like it might, or even the adjustment council might go on, it might be a child who's just not attending to instruction. So, we want to see if whatever we've set in place, if the child's now able to pay more attention, if it's more engaging, whatever we've determined it is, someone will go in and take notes on that and meet with the teacher. And then we might reassign students to appropriate interventions based on the formative asses- assessment that we've gathered. And we meet with the teams of teachers weekly. And you can see that we monthly monitor our K through 2 teachers' progress monitoring, strategic students every four weeks for intensive students and monthly monitoring of, sorry, next one. Data will be used to inform instruction and intervention strategies for at-risk students. This will be reviewed on a five-week cycle. We don't want to turn it over too quickly, so we want to go out for five weeks. If we turn it over too quickly, we can't tell if an intervention has worked. So, we want to keep the data for a certain period of time. We use our ISTs to monitor student progress to ensure that struggling students improve. After an assessment cycle, we look to see that our students struggling receive additional support if they have not improved. So, that we'll come back to the IST team. If there's improvement, great, we'll keep them on that intervention. If they have stayed the same or they declined, we'll change the intervention and make it a more intensive intervention for them. Or if we find that there are students who no longer need remediation, they've met a goal, we can remove those services. We review the student progress quarterly with the staff, so that's our A reading and our A math, and we determine the effectiveness of each of the programs. And then our last one, you have seen before, and that's to create, communicate, and build our existing and community partnerships with an emphasis of aligning our partnerships with the curriculum. Some of these are on hold, like our 300 committee with the T-Ticket park. We had planned to go out at the end of May last year and it poured on the day that we had planned to go out. And now, we're out of our building, so it makes it additionally hard to go out there. So, we do plan to go out when we can, when we're back in our building and we can go back into the park and stop. This is for our teachers to go out in the park. Actually, our grade 2 students have gone out into the park and done some studies, which was wonderful, but we want our teachers to be able to go out and expand the curriculum there. We still have our partnerships with like Hui, the National Seashore, Montez Vineyard Savings Bank. We've most recently, because we've been relocated, have a nice partnership with the Morse Pond grade 6 and our grade 2 students in English Language Arts, which we would not have had had it not been for the relocation plan. So, there's been some new developments, but we're continually looking for an alignment of partnerships within the community. But right now, we're on hold, but we are enjoying the ones that we have and we hope to continue and strengthen those with a look to the curriculum.
Thank you. Questions for Deb? One of the advantages of going last.
All the questions have been answered. We've heard enough about attendance.
Carrie.
Hello. I think it's great that you mentioned a positive thing from the negative situation, that pairing with the 2nd grader and 6th grader, that's just a really nice ending statement about-
There's a lot of positive things that you really should know about the relocation. It really had, it's a difficult situation being out of our building, but both schools have welcomed us in and it, it really has not been bad. I know we're overcrowded at East and I know that we've put people in each of the schools out of their comfort zones, but they've all been very welcoming and supportive of us. And some really good things have come out of it. As you've heard from Dr. Dale, our teachers also have team taught and like her teachers, we have new teachers with veteran teachers, so they've been able to support, our veteran teachers have been able to support the new teachers. And as you said, it was really nice to have Morse Pond 6th grade partner with our 2nd grade and do ELA projects together. I have pictures of them that, if you, you'd like, I could send some to Nancy and you can see our 2nd grader sitting with the 6th graders. It's just very heartwarming and we've been, just to share another thing, we've been invited because at East, we'll be doing the harvest parade with them. Our 2nd through 4th graders are at Morse Pond and there isn't a harvest parade, but we're going to have a harvest parade where the Morse Pond children, Tim McLaughlin is setting up a parade route for us and we will parade through the Morse Pond school. Our children will don costumes and go through. So, there's a lot of really nice things going on and you should know that all of the staff in both schools have really welcomed us in. So, thank you. And thank you for your support because John has also opened a facility for us and given the T-Ticket students an opportunity to come in and enjoy themselves on a Sunday that it was wonderful. It was probably one of the warmest days we'll ever see from now on, but it was great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Deb?
I had a question about transportation, going back to your school improvement goal one, that you said that you've worked with Greg Kennedy.
So, in the, so I'm just going to have an example.
So, Molly Keefe's mom calls and says she's missed the bus, I can't get her to school today, I want her to get there, is there any way you can help me? Is that a scenario kind of thing?
No. There was a time when I drove out and got students, but I was stuck in doing that. I used to do that in my other district.
We are not to transport students.
Right.
Personally.
Yes.
You're not allowed to.
So, I guess-
So, no, no, I did not, I did not call Greg to do that. What had happened is we had a student that was not able to access transportation and he was able to provide transportation and alternate transportation for the child.
Okay.
On regular, it was regular-
I see.
-regular time.
Sure.
Different route.
Got it. So, that leads me to a question for you, Nancy. If that were a reoccurring situation, is there, is there a chance? Because at, as we've all identified, the elementary school kid isn't missing school because it's their fault usually.
Mm-hmm.
Not usually, I'm just going to say like ever. Because they're really not in a position to be able to manage that morning situation. So, is that a taboo subject for me to suggest, saying, you know what, I tried, I couldn't get her there, we're having, I don't own a vehicle, we rely on the bus, or my vehicle has disappeared in the night? I don't know, I'm just thinking about like, how can we, if this is a real thing, how can we support it and not have it be taken advantage of that, well, you know what, you missed the bus, I'm going to call.
Let me just let Nancy start and then Justine, they want to answer.
If I found that pattern over time, I could set up a connect ed call to that house. Quarter of eight. Wake up, the bus is coming in an hour, is a strategy that I would consider using. Not often, but if we hear about that concern or dynamic over time, that would be the strategy.
Okay. Justine, did you want to-
And oftentimes, the emergency contacts that are provided to us by parents will reach out to a parent and say, what is their comfort level with us reaching out to the emergency contact and having the emergency contact go and pick them up? Sometimes the parents are under the understanding that if they're late by an hour, it's too late to come to school. But that's not ever too late, just come to school, however you can get them here. One of my suggestions in my document that just went home was, what is your backup plan? And if you don't have one, to try to create a backup plan for yourselves, should you get sick or something after your vehicle? I want people to start thinking about those things.
We used to have an attendance officer in this district, many, many moons ago.
Gus Canty.
And that was a way-
Yeah, UConn, we haul.
Yeah, it would have to be a, you know, a town car, but we've actually taught, we toss around all kinds of ideas, but we would love to have a van and someone who, who work, when we talk about our, our family community center, we, transportation is a major barrier. So, how do you then address the barrier? I ask everyone not to transport, that is a liability.
Right.
You cannot do that under any circumstances. I mean, there have been emergency circumstances where we've said, oh my gosh, you know, okay, you take someone, you take another adult with you, we have one town car that Greg Kennedy uses, but we've had, we have talked about that a lot moving forward and you'll, you'll see that reflected in our budget planning, quite frankly.
So, that gets back to when we had our retreat, not this past summer, but the summer before, so summer of 2015. I brought it up of having a, like a Gus Canty kind of person, like a true, I don't want to say true and officer, but something like that, that, and not have it be like true and officer running after kids, skipping school, not like that, just how can we support? And transportation, you know, keeps coming, everything keeps coming back down to transportation. We all can agree that Falmouth is a huge geographical town. It's not like we're small and compact. That seems to come back to, you know, bite us sometimes on different projects that we're working on, that how can we support the transportation issue if it were to come down to, you know?
Transportation is hugely expensive, hugely expensive.
Right.
And we do talk about it. And when I, when I think about the type of position I would like to create, it would be an outreach worker.
Right.
It would be more of the social work piece and, and I would have to then, Patrick, provide some kind of a town car to be able to do something like that.
Sure.
So, the conversations being had, I don't necessarily see it happening, you know, by the end of this year. I really don't. But we are doing our best to-
I think that it, based on the four elementary school improvement goals, attendance is in there, it's in everyone's goal, and I think that it really should, I don't want to say jump to the front of the line.
But until you, but until you fall, you boil down and get into that data-
Right.
It isn't always transportation.
No, I know.
And we, we go out of our way to provide transportation.
Right.
As I said in a meeting just recently, we practically go to people's doors. So, that to me is not the issue. It's the issue in particular cases. For me, the piece is to help parents- For me, the piece is to help parents get into routines.
Right.
Because we already provide the transportation. It's giving the parents the skills and the tools to make sure that they're getting their children up and ready and fed and out to that bus. That to me is another, a bigger piece that we need to focus on rather than adding additional transportation pieces, even though I think, even then, we need a little bit of a backup plan.
Sure.
But it's not a fleet of buses.
Right. Agreed.
And I, I think that, you know, that's what, when, I think it was you Nancy who was talking about the connect ed.
Right, because our buses are free. So if there, if there was a fee, then, you know, I think we'd talk about that. But if parents, families, adults need help with routine.
Yeah. And this allows parents to get those independent skills of being able to do this because we're really doing a disservice if we're just providing that service and not actually supporting the child in that situation. So, so yeah, I think that that is, and that's kind of with that wraparound approach as to how do we support families to become more independent to be able to do these things? But I think we're not going to know until we know what that data looks like as to what the reasons are and then support.
It's like treating the symptom, you know?
Yeah.
It doesn't really work in the long term.
Yeah, and it easily can be taken advantage of and.
Right, and I, I don't want to be anyone to be advantage of it, but I don't know, maybe showing an example of what your morning might want to look like for families that are new to getting kids out the door. I don't know. I don't know.
My two most delinquent this year, transportation wouldn't help. So that's the data that we do have to have before involving a car.
Any other questions for Deb, comments?
Comment. The police liaison. How often are they used? Do they make home visits?
That's how I know about the two most delinquent.
And.
They don't really make home visits. They are out in the community and they are a community liaison officer to the schools. And we just started it this year at the elementary level, so we're still developing it. But they're visiting schools, they're having conversations with principals. And again, you have to be careful about information and what's legal and what isn't. But we can share information about concerns that we have in particular areas in town and they in turn support us and they're part of our safety teams and they're part of being in the buildings and reaching back to the littler ones so that police have a different, kids look at them differently.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Thank you Deb, thank you all. You did great work.
Awesome, our youngest kids, so thank you.
All right, moving along. Routine business, approving the minutes from October 4th, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 4th, 2016.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes. Superintendent's brief is.
Okay. Quickly, we're going to start with just a quick video clip, please.
And I'll go through a couple of things. In my briefing, a good amount of my time recently is being spent with principals developing their professional development goals and having those conversations, also with my central office staff, keeping in mind that we're, we're heading into the budget season, so trying to develop that budget based on our priorities and our goals and our strategic plan. We're spending a lot of time on that right now. I wanted to just show a clip. Deb mentioned the T-Ticket Day at the Seacrest, which was on Sunday, October 16th, and that was just an amazing event. And I just want to share a comment that a T-Ticket staff member came up to me and she said, you know, can I speak to you for a minute? And I'm like, oh, you know, I always feel like, oh no. And so she pulled me aside and she said, you know, I just want to mention that I think you need to know that it hasn't been lost on the staff that John Fenari put this together for the T-Ticket School and none of his kids went to the T-Ticket School. And so she just said, I just want to make sure that he knows and the school committee knows that that didn't go unnoticed and that they were very, very grateful. Because I'm always talking about, we are a school system, we're not a system of schools. And so we're all working together in this. And I just thought that was, I wanted to share that. I thought that was a very important comment, John.
Thank you.
We're here celebrating T-Ticket Day. Want to thank Clark Quinn and the full staff of the Seacrest Beach Hotel for hosting our Seacrest T-Ticket Day event here. Basically, what we're doing is we're very proud of the kids, the parents and the staff of T-Ticket Elementary School and how they're working their way through the current situation and moving forward. Instead of saying, why me? They all said, we got this. And they're saying, what's next? And we at Seacrest are very proud of that and we celebrate their resiliency. And we're just enjoying the day here. The kids are celebrating in the pool, we're having lunch and we're happy and we're proud of the staff, the students and the parents. They all are what make up T-Ticket Elementary School.
I'm on the T-Ticket PTO and we'd like to thank the Seacrest and John specifically for setting up this beautiful day for us. It's a little bit windy, but it's quite warm for October and as you can see, everybody's having a wonderful time. This has been a lot of fun. It's great to get our community back together where we've been split between two buildings at the moment. And I think our teachers and our kids are doing the best they can and really making something great out of an unique situation.
That was really, really a lot of time.
Good job, John.
So if I can just spend just a couple of minutes giving you a quick update on the T-Ticket plan moving forward. As you know, we have been delayed by a month. It has been a very difficult process and the difficulty has come in the cleaning and the abatement of the T-Ticket School. We still have one area that is still cordoned off that we don't have access to just yet, but we are moving. Train went in this Monday and Train is the company through the ESCO project that will be putting the HVHC heating units in the ceilings because one of the other pieces I started to get concerned about is it's getting cold. So we need to get that done. So we're working on, they need about three weeks to finish their pieces. We have the, most of the ceilings are in, the grids are in, the insulation's in, the tiles are in, and the only places in many areas are just the places where the unit vents need to go in. So we have met, Deb and I have met with, we met with the T-Ticket staff yesterday. I felt as though I owed it to them to speak to them directly first. And then we spoke to the East Falmouth staff this morning at 8:45 and I spoke with the Morse Pond staff this afternoon just to let everyone know the same thing. And then we're going to address the PTO and parent meeting on Wednesday, November 2nd, just so that I can have a face-to-face with parents. So it's been difficult. The town has been very supportive moving us forward. You know, this has been an incredibly expensive project. The, the number in the paper is it's up to $900,000. And we, we ran into some difficulty meeting the standards put out by the Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Labor standards. It's a huge undertaking. I think we're on the home stretch. I'm feeling really good about that. And I just have to kind of reiterate what both Justine and Deb said. When I spoke to the, to East Falmouth, they were like, we're going to make it work. They were very upbeat. And Morse Pond, their reaction to me when I got there this afternoon was, you're not taking them out of here. We want to keep them. So T-Ticket needs to go home. I've taken too much away from East Falmouth and from Morse Pond and it was temporary. I just want to be very, very clear about that. They're ready to go home and the building is getting close. We're hoping that by November 1st, there'll be more access for teachers to go in to get their materials. The materials have been cleared. They're kind of just pushed out in hallways and teachers are anxious to get in. The only piece is that if there's any area that's still in any kind of containment, and there may be one, there's no access there. November 8th, I've released all the T-Ticket staff to go to the T-Ticket School and to go into their classrooms again, with the plan being that there won't be any containment. The issue with that, that I have spoken to them about is there, there's, there are layers of access to your classroom. The one, you have no access if it's in containment for the asbestos. You have limited access if they're putting the HVHC vents in there because I don't want anyone in there, anyone getting hurt. And then the other piece is where they are putting the insulation in the ceilings. We're in good shape. I've gone over there. Patrick and I take field trips all the time. It's going to be really, really beautiful. And Kevin Pimentel has done an outstanding job of keeping his sort of fingers on that project. We pulled the custodians out of East and Morse Pond, the custodians were, that were originally at T-Ticket, we pulled them out, put them back to T-Ticket to start moving things along. So we're very excited and we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. So I'm hoping that you saw the article about the Morse Pond School in the Enterprise not too long ago, the new robotics program. I'm sure you saw that, that was really awesome. And then the last piece that is not in my briefing, because again, it came in after I had done it, is that Karen Delaney, who works with the Service Center, has been, I'm so excited about this. She has been awarded the Healthy School Hero Award by the Action for Healthy Kids and I'm very excited about that for the work that she's done at the T-Ticket School with the Grab and Go Breakfast. And she'll be receiving a $500 award and I'm sure we'll be hearing from the Enterprise and some other entities. So I'm very, very excited. And thank you Karen for all your work at T-Ticket. So it's been a really, it's been an interesting month, but through some collaborative and collective consensus, we've been able to really work together and, and move the T-Ticket project forward. So thank you.
Questions for Nancy?
Just as a comment, actually, just a great job Nancy overall, you know, and Nancy was front and center there for T-Ticket Day and, and I think your leadership actually is really important to setting the tone. And I was very impressed with all three schools, how they interact and how it is, it is saying what's next and we've got this. So kudos for them.
And it's reflective of the district and the community. So I'm, I'm very proud to be part of it. So thank you.
Anything else for Nancy? Okay. Moving on to the directors. Sonya, is there anything that you'd like to highlight in your report?
No, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I will highlight something out of the report. Last Tuesday, we held the Community Education Forum for the Start Time Task Force. We would have liked to have had larger attendance. I'm going to say we had probably 30 something people there. Very, very good questions. It was also broadcast live, so we don't, we don't know what the ratings are. But it was broadcast live. So, so I can't say that we learned anything new and I would say that the audience was very much, just like the surveys that we've gotten, they were really split, you know, some in favor, some against, so forth. I know a bunch of you were there, so if there's anything else you'd like to share that. And then last night, we held the meeting where we had invited school committees and athletic directors from surrounding towns. We had people from, help me out, this Plymouth, Barnstable, Mashpee, Dartmouth and Siteway there and so forth. Very good conversation. I think we learned some things there. There's a wide range of, you know, Mashpee is, is, is moving ahead very rapidly on this. Other schools have dipped their toes in the water, others are just starting to think about it. So the process continues. Questions on anything on that? Any other questions for Sonya? Thank you, Sonya. Zach, is there anything that you'd like to highlight from your report?
Just on my final bullet, that November is Family Literacy Month and at your place, we have a sample of an informational packet that will be sent home with all kindergarten through grade six students the first week of November to encourage families to sit with their children and to embrace literacy activities. And we have a list of suggestions provided by several of our K-6 teachers. So I want to thank the teachers who shared the information and I encourage parents and families to embrace literacy all year, specifically in the month of November.
Great. Questions for Zach? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Charles, anything that you'd like to highlight from your report?
I just want to add one thing that's not on here. We are in our fourth year of our collaboration with the Falmouth Service Center in hosting the fresh markets. And about a few weeks ago, it was the first fresh market of the season and it, I want to highlight, it was the biggest one yet where over 100 families were seen and served in the one-hour period of time that was held at the East Falmouth Elementary School. Our next one is on this Thursday, again at East Falmouth. And I just think it's, it's a wonderful service that's being done and just has so many messages within the number that are being served. This year though, as part of the rotation, we will be holding some of them at the high school for the first time and actually doing it a bit earlier so that students from the high school would be able to access it as well. So I just wanted to highlight that because you'll be hearing more about that.
Thank you. Questions for Charles?
I have a question about the fresh market at the high school. When you say that you're going to begin it earlier so that the high school students can go after school.
Yeah.
Would it be okay that other parents of schools that haven't been let out yet go at that time? Or are we encouraging to only come with your younger students? So are they encouraging to wait until after the other schools?
No, not necessarily. We're working out the details around the high school one because it's going to be a bit later in the year. But the, the thought was, no, it's open to one and all regardless of the time, but some of the more details of it, we just don't know yet.
Got it.
But we want to service as many as possible.
Right. And the only requirement is that you have a child in the schools, right?
No, not necessarily. I mean, we, our connect to ed call goes out naturally to all that, you know, are part, a part of Falmouth Public Schools. However, it's an invitation that is out there.
For everybody in the community?
Well, yes and no. We're not turning anyone away. However, it is open to all those as part of Falmouth and part of the Falmouth family. We are advertising it, so to speak, with those within the Falmouth School System, but people who come, who may, you know, not have a student in the school are not being turned away.
Other questions?
I have another question and it goes to the history of homeless.
Mm-hmm.
Have the standards or descriptions changed since the 06, 07 year to represent such a dramatic increase in homelessness, homeless mix? Sorry.
There have been some nuances in the McKinney-Vento, Vento Act. Nothing that has been dramatic. I think what you see is a true rise in homelessness. Now, one of the things that will be different, and naturally, the number to date is low because that grows as the year unfolds. However, there is a change where beginning December 10th, because of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the reauthorization of the No Child Left Behind Act, something that was put in Every Student Succeeds Act is that students who are part of a group home or are in temporary foster care or awaiting placement will no longer be considered homeless. That is a change. That will take effect in, on December 10th.
Okay. Can you briefly tell us the description of what's considered homeless? It's not just living in a box on the bog kind of thing. It's, to date, it's a child living in a halfway, or in a, you know, a shelter.
Or it may be a family who is living with another relative, but it is not their place of residence any longer in terms of where they were coming from.
Okay.
And if you don't have, if you're, where you go at night is temporary. That's a big part of the language. If you don't have a consistent place to stay every night. So if you're couch surfing.
Correct.
That is homeless. Or you're doubling up. Can I stay at your house tonight or someone else's house or maybe your house for two nights? That's homeless. So you really do have to look at the Desi definition of homeless. And McKinney-Vento clearly outlines that.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles, do you have a sense of, you, that the to-date number there? Charles, do you have a sense of, you, that the to-date number there, how that corresponds to corresponding times in the last few years?
In terms of this period of time for October, you mean?
Right. You're saying it's 21 to date right now. So if we look back at last year, is that number higher or lower?
To date, it's about the same, if I recall. I'd have to dig that out a little further, but I want to say it was, this might be a little higher or right about where it is. It's on pace.
So I'm trying to figure out how to say this without sounding incredibly insensitive. But what is the impact on the schools to service homeless students?
It varies. It's a good question. It's one of the reasons with this reauthorization, why foster kids and awaiting foster care and group home kids are taking out of that because there is, it's difficult on the student. Let's put it that way. That would then correlate to the school. In part, though, sometimes there is transportation issues. Greg Kennedy would be the first to say, how does it impact the school? It keeps him up at night in trying to figure how these students are transported. Because last year, we were transporting a student from Fall River who was homeless, yet the right was to remain here in his neighborhood school that he was entitled to stay in, yet they were homeless in Fall River. So pros and cons, both for school and for the child. Not to mention, and I'm really putting emphasis on the child because of the stresses that that family, that child is experiencing. And that just trickles down then within the school environment.
Sure. Any other questions for Charles?
Do you know the number of foster care parents and the group homes in the Falmouth area? What you're dealing with? Because they could be sent from cities and they end up in a group home in Falmouth. Do we have any idea how many?
We do. We have Cape Star, which is a program on Gifford Street, which is a student, they're not Cape students. They come here, they're placed. No, they're not. And they have full access to the Lawrence School and Falmouth High School.
Yes. I was just curious about the numbers.
It looks like only one is living in a group home.
Right now.
So that would be, that would be the Cape Star.
That would be the Cape Star, correct. And then five, as it lists here, who are in shelters. And four in temporary foster care. So as of December 10th, five will be reduced from that 21.
Right.
Under the new definitions.
Anything else? Thank you, Charles. Cindy, anything that you'd like to highlight from your report?
No, I'll just take any questions that any of you might have.
Questions for Cindy. I did go to the Technology Advisory Board meeting and I can tell you that the ideas that Cindy is working with on the new website for the school district are very exciting.
In particular, the multi-language feature. I wasn't at, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm really excited that we're now going to have multiple languages available on our site because...
A bazillion languages. It's like the list is amazing.
Actually, I'm passing that right here.
And I was prepared. What a great way to just make things more accessible for families.
And the Phase 2 would be the app that would be after we establish the website. We do get our own branded Falmouth Public Schools app that would be accessible, built upon the layer for additional family and community engagement.
Oh, this is great.
I challenge, I challenge you to know even 90% of these languages.
How about Welsh? Got that covered. There we go. So, and I had mentioned this to Cindy before as well, that, you know, the fact that the website is going to be available in all these languages is amazing to me and so inclusive. And whether or not other sites that we hope parents can and do use are also in their native language. So whether or not things like Power School are available in native language because we, parents need to be able to use that. Or whatever other things parents are, you know, teachers are hoping kids can use at home. Just so great that we're moving toward this.
And sometimes we're, in that case, we really are, it's the product development on the programs that we have in place, whether they're keeping up with that.
Right. Or even whether or not we've asked if they have it, because we might not have. Maybe they have it and we don't know.
I think things are improving a lot in that area.
And Power School very well might have it. I just use the English version, so I've never looked. So, no.
Just a comment about translations, too. I mean, I see that it's a Google Translate that's...
Word to word.
Yeah. And so it's not really an equal translation. And a comment about Power School, it really, companies are really behind the times as to what families look like in United States schools. And it's really, really challenging to get programs that are translated.
And well, done well.
And done well. And, you know, this is the only really option available right now, which is unfortunate.
But it's better than nothing. And we got to move forward somehow.
But if there are people out there who are translators, this is the market to go into because we need it. Education translation.
Any other questions for Cindy? Thank you, Cindy. Patrick, anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
Nothing from my report. I just wanted to share with the committee that I'm attending a training on multi-hazard emergency management planning that's being conducted at Upper Cape Tech with representatives from DESI, the State Police, and a professor at UMass Amherst. So that's, just to let you know that this, all this work that we do and prioritize around security and safety at our schools is an ongoing process. Jeff Smith, who's a detective in town, is attending. And Joey Inseigts, who is a teacher and sits on one of our security committees, our safety committees at Morse Pond is attending. So it's an ongoing process.
So Patrick, is the Lawrence Windows Project done? Are you still working on a punch list?
The punch list is just about done. We'll have another meeting about that. There are some very formal processes that have to get done before you can say it's complete. And the very last process is, is a commissioning agent called Gale and Associates who works for the MSBA. So we have our architect, we have our OPM, the MSBA has their, their agent. And they're the last ones to sign off on the project. They haven't quite gotten there yet.
Do you think that we'll be able to say it's done before town meeting?
It's done. It's done. Go over there and look at it. It's done.
It looks amazing. It looks absolutely amazing. And even the door buzzer works now. It's very exciting. But it would be nice still to report back that it's done and be able to tell people that it was, you know, as expected. Especially at the same time. Especially at the same time that we're, you know, over time and over budget on the other stuff, so.
Will there be tours again? It'd be nice for everyone to see.
Oh, since everyone will be there.
Finished product, yeah.
Any other questions for Patrick?
Just a suggestion, should have the gentleman that did the original window thing to do the tour, a video of the tour.
Don Drew would enjoy doing that.
Is it at the high school this time?
I don't think so.
They said the high school this time.
Is it? Yes.
Town meeting in November is in the high school.
We voted on it in April. It'll probably be back. I'm sure.
Give it one try. I think it's got a...
People need to be reminded about that. Otherwise, you're going to have this traffic going.
And our meeting is the course.
So our next meeting will be at the high school.
Yes.
All right. Report from the chair. I don't have anything. Report from committee members. Melissa?
So I would like to report as a, I don't know what, I would just like to report that the East Falmouth School hosts a town-wide Honor Tree program. And this year, we're having it on, it's a lighting ceremony that we have to honor any current, current people in the military or deceased veteran or a living veteran. We have different bulbs for different status as to where they are in their service to our country. And that is coming up on November 10th at 5:30. We will be serving coffee and hot chocolate. We also, usually we have a recognition in the Falmouth Enterprise on this. And we are getting out these Honor Tree forms that you can donate $3 a bulb depending on the status of your veteran in your life or who you would like to, you know, have a bulb for. I happen to be the chair of this, so you could get them to East Falmouth School or you could mail them to us. We donate 100% of those proceeds to the Falmouth Military Support. So just like to draw attention to that. Yes, we host it at East Falmouth School, but it is a school-wide, district-wide program and actually a town-wide program. We get a lot of donations from people in the community who don't have children in the school anymore.
Thank you. Any other committee member reports? Any requests for follow-up information? Sorry.
In regards to the article in the Cape Cod Times this morning, we got in graduation rate at some point. Could we have more explanation from you, especially in the comparisons of towns?
Yes, absolutely.
Just wanted to ask some information about those half-days, about attendance on those half-days, if we can look at maybe...
We're going to, we're going to need a little more time for that.
Okay. Just for the future.
We will do that. What I did was I made a note for the Administrative Council meetings so that we can start maybe digging into that a little bit. I mean, we could probably give you today fairly easily. But in terms of looking at patterns, but I think it's a really good point.
Kelly?
I have not a request for information, but for agenda items. So in our minutes last time, said we were going to talk about the strategic plan at this meeting, which was already full. So I don't know if it's going to come to the next one.
We have a plan for that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And then also the approval of the school improvement plans and the withdrawal of the Field Number Two thing.
The withdrawal of the Field Number Two, we will deal with that next meeting.
Great.
We already have an appropriate form from legal counsel on how to do that. And I'm sorry, what was the...
The school improvement plans, we said we didn't have to approve them, but we...
We don't. And you also just got them tonight, so we, I was going to ask that the next...
For the next.
You, you vote to support them.
Support all of them at the same time.
At the same time.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Who are you, Ms. Secretary?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. It is expected of the school, and you will not return to public session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Unanimous. We're adjourned.